Call the Dublin Council back to order. And as it is their final appearance on Dublin City Council, I would ask Tim and Amy to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the proclamation portion of the agenda, Jerome's, the Dublin Jerome Men's Golf Team, as I understand it, won the state championship for the state of Ohio. So congratulations to them. We have some special things to present to you. And as Chris Amrose-Grooms is well acquainted with Jerome Men's Golf Team, I will turn it over to her.
You guys clean up all right, looking good, nice. A handsome group. Okay, we have a proclamation for you and congratulations to your state championship. Whereas the Dublin Jerome High School Men's Golf Team won the 2017 Division One State Golf Championship on Saturday, October 21st, 2017, marking the seventh state championship in program history. And whereas with a two-day combined score of 607 at the Ohio State University Scarlet Course, the team set a Division One State Championship course record. And with a score of 295 on the opening day of the tournament, they set the record for the lowest single-day team score in Division One State Championship history. And whereas the team led by Coach Taylor Harley has an overall record of 298 and 12, with an average team score of 298.5. And whereas prior to the state tournament, the Dublin Jerome Men's Golf Team won the sectional tournament with a score of 280, and the district championship with a score of 294, with Blake taking off his shoes to make sure he can make a good score on what was that, 12, 13? Whereas the member of the state championship Celtics Men's Golf Team are Blake Solomon, Jackson Chandler, Mason Wagner, Ethan Snyder, Davis Root, and Nick Harlick. And whereas the team motto is attitude, etiquette, and integrity, and the Celtics try to incorporate those qualities in everything they do as they strive to build a tradition of excellence in golf, academics, and community contributions. Therefore, he, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of the Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim Friday, December 8th, 2017, as Dublin Jerome High School Men's Golf Team Day in the City of Dublin, to extend our congratulations to the team and their coach on this outstanding achievement. We have a couple little gifts for you here. Ethan, Jackson, Blake is going to attend Dayton University, play golf there. Mason, you have another year left, but you've already committed to Xavier the following year. And I think Davis, you're going to be at Wright State. And Nick, you are going to achieve great things. Nick's got one of the highest GPAs in golf history, I think, so he's going to do great things and stay awful busy. Taylor, do you have a few things you'd like to say?
Sure. I don't have much to plan, but sure. Thank you very much for having us here. We're very honored to get recognized. These past couple of months have been a great opportunity for me. I've really enjoyed spending time with these guys. As, you know, Mrs. Grooms said, they did a great job on the course, obviously, but off the course as well in the classroom. We missed a lot of school this year, having to travel to tournaments and that kind of thing. And the fact that they're able to keep their grades intact and work hard off the course as well is something that attributes to them. And, you know, these last couple of weeks have just been something that I know I will always remember, and I'm sure they will as well. So thank you very much.
No, he's the coach. I don't want to be photobomb or anything. Congratulations, fellas. Well done. Well done.
Good job, Coach.
Good job, Coach. Thanks for coming in. You know, it never, it just amazes me, the quality of students and student athletes that we have in this community. It's really a truly remarkable thing that we're all very proud of. Special presentations, ROTO. Matthew, what is that?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just really quickly, I just want to make a quick introduction. This is a project that has been months in the making, very unique project, public and private partnership, led by one of our recreation administrators, Erin Duffy, who is here this evening, who will eventually introduce Joseph Wisney from ROTO to talk a little bit about that program. So I'm going to turn the microphone over to Erin and let her tell you a little bit about how we got to where we are with this project.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Dana.
It's nice to see everyone. Thanks for having me. I just wanted to give a brief background of the project and how it kind of unfolded prior to passing it over to Joseph to speak about the actual project. Some of you may have noticed in the lobby out front, the interactive display station that is out there where we will pose a question to the community, and people can respond via chalk. So you can see it, it will be out there whenever you leave this evening, so be sure to check it out. What was really interesting is some of the rec services staff went to the Columbus Museum of Art, and they have a lot of different interactive display stations. So the interactive display stations are maybe Legos or Twisty Ties that they can build, that the community can build sculptures with. Or there was a station that was called Join the Conversation Station, and they utilize Post-it notes, and they posed questions to the community, and people could respond on Post-it notes what they thought. So it's just a really unique way to gather community input and feedback from people. And we wanted to install this interactive display station at the rec center, since it's such a public building within our community. So we can pose questions, what do you do in Dublin on a sunny afternoon, to something a little bit more serious, whatever maybe council might be interested in receiving from the public. So it's a really great opportunity for us to build partnerships here in Dublin. It was really neat how it unfolded, because when we reached out to the Columbus Museum of Art to say, how did you get started on these interactive displays? We were connected with a Dublin resident, her name is Mary Lee Mostov, and she was the chief engagement officer for the museum. So she was really excited to come in and share with us their experiences in building these interactive displays. And when she came in, we also found that she was a lap pool swimmer every single morning at the rec center. So she was really excited to say, oh, you're interested in my idea? And she was really interested in passing that information on on how they got started. She also connected us to ROTO. So she said, have you ever heard of ROTO? And we found that ROTO was right in our backyard on the other side of Kaufman Park, and that's how we met Joseph and his team. So it was really neat, all the different Dublin connections that we pulled together in order to get this project done. It's really a fine example of our cross-divisional work teams at their finest. I mean, we were really, we worked with parks because ROTO, we found, was also possibly working with them to do some interpretive signage for Holder Right. And we worked with community and public information with Sarah, did I get that right? With Sarah to really think about some ideas on how we would monitor this, how we would pose questions, how we would get feedback, that type of thing. So it was, it's a really great opportunity for us to continue to build partnerships within the community. And it's my pleasure to introduce Joseph Wisney, and he will give you a little bit more specific information on the goals and what ROTO actually does. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, Joe. Okay, so the story gets even a little bit more interesting and deeper. This is ROTO's front door. We're a 15-year-old company, and we're always in Dublin. We founded ourselves on Toll Road in 2004 and have continued to grow and grow, and we're now occupying about 60,000 square feet here. If you walked in the front door of ROTO upstairs, you would see this, which is a very large design studio. Looks a lot like any architecture studio. It has planning, design, project management, and that's normal for our industry, which is the design and planning of museums and exhibitions. What is different and unique is the other side of the building looks like that, which is an innovative sort of R&amp;D lab, very clean space for media and electronics, because, as you know, many interactive museums do lots of interactive exhibits, and they take custom kind of, you know, technology. And further, that is a 40,000-square-foot manufacturing facility. So ROTO is this. On the left, design, we're a design firm, and on the right, a design-build firm. So right here in Dublin, Ohio, we do quite a lot of international and national scale museum design and exhibition design. And most people don't know that happens, whoops, right here in the city. Okay, so the other interesting thing about this is that all museum design work, like all great fun projects, are collaborations. What you see here is a school bus that's pulled up in front of ROTO's building, dropping off a number of kids from Dublin City Schools. Another thing that's totally unique about what we do is it's a partnership. Dublin City School kids, in partnership with their teachers and administrators, help us design and build these exhibits, including the display outside. So they might participate in front-end ideation, they might test the exhibits in some prototype fashion, they may test those exhibits in their final form. And this is the true spirit of collaboration. That's a bit of a client list, and you'll see that there's maybe some recognizable names. Smithsonian is on this list along with Google. We've done maybe 150 projects, and I would say in the last five years that Dublin City School children have touched most of those in some direct, personal way. How's that for international impact? Just a couple of quick pictures of some of those projects. This one's in Saudi Arabia in a museum that's just about to open, one of the largest museums on the planet, called King Abdulaziz Center for World Culture. This one's brand-new, and it's a next-generation interactive exploration museum that will be in Chengdu, China. We do all kinds of themed entertainment stuff, lots of children's museums, high-technology science centers, and collecting institutions. You've heard of the Smithsonian, National Museum of American History. This was one of my projects. Dublin School Kids participated in this one, too. High-tech and decidedly low-tech. This one is an art exhibit. In the back of the room over there is someone named Molly, wave to us, Molly. She designed not only the display outside in the hallway for DRCRC, but also this award-winning project. The Smithsonian, by the way, this whole group of museums, was asked to pick one project that they would take to Davos, Switzerland, in January for the World Economic Forum. They picked this one. Once again, touched by Dublin, all the way in Switzerland. Pretty fun. Most of our stuff's a little wackier, like SpongeBob, or Crazy Town, or Big Giant Ducks, or Orange Factories, or Dripping Water, or Flying Pigs, just to give you a sense of the kinds of things that we're up to. And then something like that. All right, so let's talk about this opportunity. We were approached, and we first asked for a budget, because it's always important that we deliver these design builds to a budget. Our normal budgets range between, you know, six figures to seven-plus figures. Projects last six months, nine months, 12 months, maybe two years. So here we have something decidedly smaller than that. And so we reach into our repertoire of visitor engagement kinds of interactives, which is a very important trend in museums, okay? Museums of old days used to be, hey, we're the experts, we're going to tell you what you should know. Modern museums are about two-way engagement, participation. So our goals here were to build a stronger sense of community, or a strong sense of community, foster imagination, you know, bolster connection to DRCRC and its programming, gather input, and just be fun. So we started with some ideation like these, the Join the Conversation idea that was down there in the art museum in Columbus, various forms of interaction with boards like this, chalkboard response, magnetic bubbles. These are all very interesting, low-cost, high-engagement kinds of ways to deliver on this outcome. And especially important to note that we used the same program with Dublin City Schools to test these ideas. They were coming anyway for parts of other projects, but it was easy for us to go ahead and get them to ideate around this. So you'll see a couple photographs there of different models and prototypes of what this could become. Now, it's important, and we learned this through testing, that two key factors are required to get people to actually do this stuff. One is visitors have to want to do it, and two, they want to observe the contributions of other people. If it's not intrinsically motivating, they won't do it. If they don't see what other people have said, they're not interested. We live in a social media environment. So here we have a very simple-looking thing. In the middle, there is a green bubble. That's covered in plexiglass with a very clever magnetic catch on there, so that only the trained monitors can get in there and rewrite the question into something new. Everybody else can write their answers in the bubbles. And we'll see how it works. It's actually a bit of a prototype itself. Its features are that it's flexible, accessible to all, it provides direct feedback, it's very attractive and appealing, distinct from everyday experience, including, by the way, a digital experience. It's easy to think, hey, just do this on your phone, hey, just do this with some kiosk. We all get plenty of digital experiences in life, and it's important, in the museum context that we come from, to do things multisensory, tactically, with your hands, with your, with your sense of touch. So that's why this is that way. Intriguing prompts allow us to ask any question and try to get people to respond, and we hope, this means visitors will want to participate and will want to observe the contributions of others. So what are some of the prompts that the DRCRC staff could write in there? Tell your Dublin story, or if I were mayor of Dublin for a day, I would, dot, dot, dot. What place on earth do you most long to visit? Who is your hero?
That's a scary question, right there, buddy.
And I come to DRCRC to blank, blank, blank. Maybe the best way to spend an afternoon in Dublin is. So I think you get the right idea. That's what I've got for you. And once again, we're really proud to participate. I think it'll be a fun little experiment. Once again, we're right around the corner, so if something goes wrong, we'll be right over to fix it. Thanks.
Fantastic. Thanks so much for coming in, Joe. And not to lose sight of the fact of how fantastic it is that your company is here in our community. You know, they're just like gems that we hear about over and over again, and we're so proud to have you here.
Thanks.
And so proud that you have, you call Dublin home, so we look forward to interacting with your project.
Thank you.
Council have any questions for Joe?
Are you open for tours?
Well, they can be.
I mean, those projects are also interesting in your design-build, so you get to see.
Proprietary, proprietary stuff you have, too.
Yes, absolutely. We're proud of what we do, and once again, it is highly collaborative, the environment is, and we've done many open houses and tours for like the parents of the school kids that are coming through, so.
That's really a cool business, and I was just wondering, is there anything Dublin can do to help you out?
We appreciate the offer, and perhaps there will be down the road. We'll see. We've been growing pretty steadily, and, you know, space is always a question, so now we'll come back for sure.
Where do you get most of your employees from, Joe?
It's a little tough. If we were based out of Boston, or LA, or another city where there's a little bit more of a sort of design, you know, kind of.
Community, yeah.
Community. It's easy to pluck in the ICs, independent contractors. Here, we have to train them up. So it's important, we catch some students at Ohio State and other locations, and then try to get them in early. We can also import them. ROTO is now known as probably the leader in some of these museum sectors, so we're actually in demand in a way we haven't been for most of our history, so that's exciting.
Absolutely fantastic. Thank you so much.
So how long will these be up?
Well, this is a relatively permanent thing. I mean, if it doesn't work, we'll take it back. But it's an experiment, and it'll, it's, basically, it's a pro bono, so it's, it belongs to Dublin, and you can keep it for as long as you like.
So how will they aggregate the data and then?
Yeah, it's one of those things where, you know, the benefit of the tactile sort of chalkboard informality is attractive, but it is harder to record the data. One thing we can do is just snap pictures of it, and that way you just have the photographic reference. We'll work with DRCRC and Erin to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Wonderful.
Anybody else?
Thank you so much.
Okay.
I just want to comment how cool, I learned a new word, which is ideate, which I love, by the way. But I work in transportation at Dublin Schools, and so I get to talk to the teachers. They're so excited to take their kids there, and now I know what they're doing, and I'm always, this is the coolest place, because I know a little bit about your company. They're always so excited. But the company pays for the school bus that takes the children to and from. So they really appreciate that as well. So great partnership.
Yes, it is.
Very fascinating. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Joe, for coming in. Dublin Bridges, Jill Krantz-Duber? So Jill and I, we have all known Jill for a couple of years.
Yes.
And Jill is the president of the Dublin Kaufman PTO. And actually, when we went, why do we go to a football game? We went to a football game for some reason, and as we're standing out on the field, Mike Allring, the principal, starts talking to me about Jill and about how she's the president of the PTO, and how valuable she was and active and all that. And we ran into each other at one of the school events.
NHS events.
Yeah, the National Honor Society.
AR kids.
And we started to talk about one of her latest projects, and it's Dublin Bridges. And this is the blending of technology and compassion, and it's such a fantastic project. So please tell us about it and tell us how we can get involved.
I will. I'd like to introduce Sarah Savage, who is.
Hi, Sarah.
The co-director with me for Dublin Bridges. And bridges is nothing like what you guys deal with. This is a 501(c)(3), not something you drive or walk over.
We can just do a quick introduction. Jill and I are both PTO presidents. I'm Eli Penny's PTO president, and she is Kaufman's PTO president, like Mayor Peterson just said. And we were introduced to Dublin Bridges actually at a PTO president's meeting. Jill and I both are stay-at-home moms. She has kids that are older, I have kids that are younger. And we both are very involved in the school system, and I don't know that either one of us was looking to take on another volunteer position, but Dublin Bridges really just spoke to us, and we were fortunate enough that we both raised our hands and were able to do this together, which has been a nice thing. We actually just launched last week here in Dublin. Dublin Bridges has been in Westerville for about 10 months now, and also Grove City and Gehanna are also just launching. So we are kind of new to this as well and starting to just get our feet wet, but we wanted to be here to introduce you to Dublin Bridges, because it's such a great asset to our community, so we will.
I'm the clicker. And you can go to jointhebridge, by the way, dot com to do this.
So basically, Dublin Bridges, there are unmet needs within our community. A lot of people, I'm sure you guys are aware of this, but a lot of our community doesn't realize that we have significant needs within the Dublin community. We are a very diverse community, and there are unmet needs. We have many organizations that are helping to meet those needs, but there are still plenty of needs that are not being met within the community, and that's where Dublin Bridges comes in to help. It's basically an act of kindness and resources. We're trying to engage the community to fill those needs, and we'll tell you a little bit more about that as we go. So like I just said, we're engaging the community, we're identifying needs through an advocacy program. What that means is that people are not self-refering to this program. We have specific advocates that we are looking for within our community. So far, our largest advocates are our school systems. We have our counselors, principals.
Teachers.
Our teachers on board. So they are identifying these needs within their school population and then bringing them to us. Other people that we want to have on board that we're working with, Welcome Warehouse is already on board, they are sending needs that they cannot fill to us. We had one today specifically. We have a community, a family of five, that needs a washer, dryer, and a couch, and Welcome Warehouse was not able to provide that to them, so it came to us. Other advocates are Centerra Mental Health, our police officers, anybody in the community who would be connected to needs. But again, we don't want this to be a self-referral program. We need our advocates out there to vouch for these families and be the ones identifying these needs and sending them to our direction.
Washington Township also, the firefighters are also advocates.
So it's not our job to really vet these needs, it's our job to get the needs out to the public.
And get them filled.
Again, this is an anonymous program, so we are not providing any information about the people in need aside from what the needs are. Those, once these needs get filled, they go directly back to the advocate, and the advocate provides the item to the family, or the items, or the monetary contribution, whatever it may be. They're the ones making the connection to the family, not us. We are simply the bridge between the two, hence Dublin Bridges.
And also, we really have to thank Washington Township, who I know they're back there.
Yes.
Because they've agreed for us to have a drop-off point, use their offices as the drop-off point. So that also takes the contact, you know, keeps the anonymity.
Absolutely. So. This is just a quick little video, how it's going to play.
We don't know if that will play.
Yeah. Well, I guess I bet you when it, we had to convert this from.
Will it play or did it not? It's what I showed you, Greg, in the auditorium.
If not, we can send it out.
There we go.
Well, we have the sound.
All right. Good guy. All right. Good. All right. That was a very catchy tune. Sorry to cut that off.
So just to give you kind of a little bit more of an idea of exactly how this process works, basically, for example, a Dublin City Counselor, or Dublin Schools Counselor will send us a need. They go onto our website, which is www.dublinbridges.org, and they click that they have, they want to post a need. They fill out their information and a description of what the need is, what they're asking for. That need comes to Jill and I. We take a look at that, we gather more information if it's needed, you know, clothing sizes today, whether it's a gas dryer, an electric dryer that's needed, things like that. Then we go ahead, and from there, that need gets posted, it goes live online. Anyone who has subscribed to our website then gets this information directly to them. It also goes out on all of our social media pages, so our Facebook page, Instagram, Twitter. And then that's when the community steps in. Anybody who's able to fill those needs, whether it's a business owner who might happen to own a company that has washers and dryers, or if it's a community member who just has an extra washer and dryer that they need to get rid of, anything can work. It's just how this, or if it's somebody who just wants to donate money, and then we are going to go and purchase that washer and dryer. It can be any, any variety of ways.
It can also be services. I know in Westerville, one of their best examples was children who needed eyeglasses. And an optometrist stepped up and met that need. And so it really, doesn't always have to be financial, it can be a lot of different ways. We had DUIA fees paid for.
Exactly. Last week.
Yeah, that was last week. So there are a lot of different things you can do.
And so then the community member simply has to go in and click on Fill the Need on the website. They fill out their information, and then we connect with them and say, hey, either drop this off to Washington Township, or you can submit your money through our PayPal account. And then we bridge the need by getting the item or the money to the advocate, and then the need is filled. So that is basically Dublin Bridges. We're really excited. We just launched last week. We have filled three needs so far within the community, and we are just growing. What we really need is to just spread the word. Get the community involved, get more people out there who, you know, have joined our website to be able to fill needs. If you are aware of any advocates or people who have a connection to people in need within the community, to put them in touch with us so that we can get them on board, but mostly just talk about Dublin Bridges. We're excited.
And if you guys look at it and you posted a need, as you call it.
Right.
If I subscribe, I get an email that says this need was just posted.
Exactly.
And I could be like, well, I didn't have the last three, but I have this one.
Exactly.
Absolutely. And we are getting ready to go on a new website platform, and once the new website launches, text messages will also go out. If you can opt-in to get text messages when needs are posted as well, as an alert. I know we're not quite there yet, but in Westerville, people were actually complaining that needs were being filled before they could get to them, and they wanted quicker access to that.
It's a problem to have. Yeah, that's a great problem to have.
So that's kind of where the new website is coming in, to try to get those needs out there faster and for people to be able to fill them.
And we currently have over 300 people who've signed up already to fill needs, which is so fast. I mean, we just launched Monday, last Monday, a week ago. And so, I mean, the response has been really, really positive within the community, and people have met our needs. I think our first two needs were met within.
10 minutes.
10 or 15 minutes. Yeah, I mean, really fast.
Well, it's very easy in a, in a community that's this.
Diverse.
Yeah, and, and sort of successful. We have a very comfortable existence. It's easy to lose sight of, forget the fact, there's a lot of people that struggle.
Yes.
You do have to have people like the fire guys that are into these houses, and I don't know if you've dealt, is it Life Care Alliance, Nancy, with the Meals on Wheels? Is that, you know, when you go deliver these meals with people, and you step into their living room, and you realize what their existence is.
Exactly.
That's the place where you got to have the eyeballs that can say, these people need some help.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You do have to have people like the fire guys that are into these houses. I don't know if you've dealt, is it Life Care Alliance, Nancy, with the Meals on Wheels? You know, when you go deliver these meals with people and you step into their living room and you realize what their existence is-
Exactly.
That's the place where you gotta have the eyeballs that can say, these people need some help.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it really was founded so that, you know, Dublin can help Dublin. I mean, we can all help our own community. And Westerville's been very successful. It was started by a gentleman named Rick Bannister. And the reason he had the idea was because his daughters played basketball for Westerville South, I believe. And he saw, you know, some of these kids couldn't afford sneakers or they couldn't afford the pay-to-play fees. And he thought, you know, that's kind of unfair because other kids have all of the latest equipment. And so he really thought, you know, we should bridge these people together, hence the name-
It's the word Bridges.
Yeah.
Dana, I'm wondering if in this season of giving, if we couldn't do a News in 90 for our Dublin-based philanthropic sort of things that we could highlight, you know, the people here in Dublin, serving the people here in Dublin, nonprofit type. And maybe Sue, we could reach out to those people and, you know, just distribute a message of these avenues are available and, you know, that we would highlight in this season.
Thank you for that. That would be awesome.
Yeah, we're gonna work on that. We'll get you programmed in.
So you might also consider other platforms that some of our other diverse areas of our community use. For example, a large group of our Asian population doesn't use Facebook. They use WeChat. So, yeah, so there are other, and Nancy and I know this because with the Friendship Association Committee that I chair, we've talked about many of them. So Nancy can certainly help you get a list of those because we have a list of those. Because then you're going to be really bringing in other areas of the community that you're not going to get with a Snapchat or a Facebook. And those are areas of the community that love to help each other and would love to be a bigger part of the overall community.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. That's exactly what we're looking for, ways to reach everybody. So thank you, that's awesome.
Nancy, we could just get them that list and help them figure out how to do that.
Nancy's been very helpful.
She's wonderful, isn't she?
Kind of computer illiterate and Nancy was very helpful. All right, well, thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Sarah and Jill. Thank you for coming in very much. Greatly appreciate it. I'm gonna divert off the agenda real quick because it's, I know it has crossed all of our minds, at least this evening. This is the last city council meeting for two of my colleagues, Amy and Tim. I'm sitting here and I'm doing the math, and I would imagine you've both been on council for 16 years. And then boards and commissions, at least for eight more than that, I would imagine, combined between the two of you. So over 40 years of dedication to this community. And I don't want to start this meeting without mentioning that and also mentioning there will be a reception at the exchange, is that right, Ann? On December the 18th, where we will be more extensively and more appropriately thanking these two for their wonderful contributions to this community. I'm sure there'll be more comments as the evening progresses, but I just wanted to take a minute to talk about that before we got into the regular portion of our agenda, which is where we are now, citizen comments. Tom Holton, Tom?
Thank you. Tom Holton, 5957, around someplace. I wanted to comment on the tree lighting the other night. Fantastic event. Great turnout. I thought the rain was gonna hold some people away or keep people away, but it didn't. It stopped just in time. But great job by the, I wanted to give the city events people and the parks and erect people a huge pat on the back. And for the, as far as the historical side is concerned, terrific partnership from everybody. We were amazed, more than amazed, by the turnout. And the collaboration, cooperation, coordination between our organization and the city was fantastic. We couldn't believe the number of people who came and stopped in the barn because of the configuration of all the activities. It was just amazing. It met my goal of increasing visibility of the Kaufman-Hemsted. We just were incredibly amazed by the number of people who just stopped in the barn to see what was there. And then we'd say, by the way, we have this house over here. It's your house. We'd like you to come and see it. And hundreds of people saw it, well, maybe 100 or so, on Thursday night. And then Saturday, pardon me, we had the Christmas at Kaufman-Hemsted. And we're still trying to figure out how many people were there. We're counting now. I estimate between 200, 250 people were there on Sunday, Saturday, excuse me. So again, far exceeded our expectations. So thanks to everybody who helped or who allowed us to participate with you on Thursday for the tree lighting. We're looking forward to it next year and to having a house open more frequently between now and then.
Thank you for what you do, Tom. You know, you have done a tremendous amount of work year after year for that to be in the condition that it was for it to be enjoyed by so many people. And I imagine most of those people went home and they were thinking, I had no idea this was even here.
That's what we heard over and over again.
But now they're exposed and now they talk to people. Tell us real quick, how often is it open now through the holidays where people could come visit?
Well, it won't be open through the holidays. We are undecorated. By the way, I have to, I'm glad you mentioned that. A thank you to the Dublin, excuse me, Muirfield Women's Club, Muirfield Garden Club, the ladies who decorated the house. They were the primary decorators for the house. They are the ones who made it as beautiful as it is on the inside. And they will be helping us undecorate pretty soon. This week, excuse me, some of their decorations are going back to their houses for their Christmas. But I've arranged for a couple of people to visit. But if any council members would like to see it this week, let me know. We'll make arrangements.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Tom, for what you do. Appreciate it. Okay, consent agenda. Well, is there anybody else that wants to comment about anything that's not on the agenda, which is just our typical routine citizen comments? Seeing no hands, I will proceed. Consent agenda, is there any council member that would like to remove any of the four items that currently reside on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I make a motion that we approve those four items. Is there a second?
Second.
Ann?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Sam O'Scroom?
Yes.
Under the postponed ordinance, is ordinance 69-17, Ann?
This is adopting the updated West Innovation District Special Area Plan as part of the City of Dublin Community Plan.
Good evening. This ordinance is relevant to the West Innovation District, which was last presented to city council at the November 6, 2017 meeting. This is the postponed version of this ordinance. In terms of this project, this is an update to an area plan that we have for the West Innovation District. This was last presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on the September 21st of 2017. They recommended approval to city council, which proceeded in October, the first reading in October 23, 2017. The second reading, as I mentioned, was on November 6, 2017, which was postponed by city council to allow us the opportunity to do additional meetings for the public. Council's direction at that point was to allow for further meetings for residential communities that surround this district and to present this particular project before city council before the end of 2017. In terms of a more general outline of what this project has entailed, I've included two phases of this particular project that most relevant, or most relevant to the public process that we've allowed for this particular project. Excuse me. We have started the public process as early as September of 2016, and that allows for several processes that have been conducted up until November of this particular year. On the right-hand side of the presentation, you'll see what we've allotted for this particular project. We've allowed for not only a variation of different types of methods for the public to comment on this particular project, but a number of avenues for the public to express their opinions. We've conducted two open houses. We've conducted online surveys, which actually had been quite successful. We had 214 surveys that were provided through that particular process. We've done several web postings, three public meetings, and again, the two additional meetings that were prompted by city council. In terms of the public meetings that we've conducted since the last meeting before city council, we hosted two meetings, one Wednesday, November 15, 2017, which was an evening meeting. We also conducted a Saturday meeting to allow for people that may not be able to attend during the weekdays. It was a Saturday morning. We conducted these meetings at the Golf Club of Dublin to be most appropriate or conducive to the residents of Ballantry. The notifications that we presented to the public was extensive. We did, I guess, electronic notifications to all of the residents of Ballantry, as well as 200 postcards that would include not only the property owners within the West Innovation District, but within a 300-feet radius of the district. We did conduct the two meetings. We were able to successfully have or host 60 attendees before, between the two meetings. The format of the meeting was generally an open house, which we provided educational information about the project, as well as a presentation that explained the chronology of the project, as well as roundtable discussions that allowed for more intimate discussions of the project. We did have residents who were very engaged in the process, as well as many of the residents did explain that they had been at previous meetings. In terms of what we posed to the public, we generally asked for comments from the public of what they would support with this particular project. General topics of support included, there's the addition of AEP lines throughout this district, of which the city has worked with the utility company to locate those lines further north away from residential communities. And we acquired support for that project. There was also a lot of support for the impetus of the project in general, that the fact that this would provide an economic base to the city at large and provide amenities for the community, as well as the expansion of the OU campus. Comments that we got, we had obtained from the public that were, I would say, more questions than concerns, were generally what prompted infrastructure improvements within this area, as well as other areas of the city, specifically to traffic concerns. They focused on discouraging cut-through traffic through the residential communities, and they did discuss some concerns about the review process. Overall, the residents were very appreciative of this opportunity to provide public input, and we were happy to provide these additional meetings for the public. In terms of how we responded to the comments from the general public, a lot of this information was more educational in terms of how the city addresses infrastructure needs for development. We discussed the fact that development occurs throughout the city on an incremental basis and that improvements will advance as those developments occur. Most of the residents were not aware of that particular process. So we were able to provide that type of information. In terms of review processes, we had committed to city council that we would discuss how these projects are reviewed in the future and in a meeting that was more appropriate than a city council meeting. In terms of future land use recommendations, we did have the opportunity to express to the community that many of our land use recommendations are based on the focus of residential communities and buffering and providing those types of transitions from residential communities. And we did, we were able to provide that information for specifically the members of In terms of recommendations, we do believe that we've addressed the concerns of city council. We were afforded the opportunity to provide the additional meetings that were requested by city council. We believe that we've addressed the public input that we were provided through those avenues. And we continue to recommend approval for this ordinance. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions about either the public meetings that we've had or the draft update that we have before you.
Thanks, Amy. Any questions from council?
I have several. Thank you for holding those additional public meetings. I think that was just the right thing to do and appreciate you taking the time to do it. My concerns largely remain what they were initially. And do you have the ability to put the draft copy of this up on the screen?
I believe so.
I'm looking for page 26 of the development and design policies.
If you could go ahead with your question.
Okay. So on this page, you'll find a, many of the materials that are going to be used in the district and how it is that they wish, that planning wishes for them to be applied. There are six materials listed there: glass, stone, wood, metal, clay, and concrete. It talks about glass and the attributes of glass. And the last two sentences says, "It works in a range of scales and due to its versatility and function is encouraged to be a predominant material. Designers are encouraged to maximize glass in the design of their elevations." I think those last two sentences under glass need to be struck because, well, I'll walk through each of the materials first. In stone, the last sentence says, "The use of stone is encouraged, but should be limited to foundations and at the ground level of an elevation." Under wood, it says, "The use of wood is encouraged. Use in contrast with more weighty, colder materials of brick, stone, metal, concrete can create a pleasant balance." So those are three very prescriptive uses of those materials. On page 27, under architectural style, it talks about, "Buildings in the district are encouraged to be modern in character. This is not, to be confused with modernistic styles." Talks about the use of glass and it, you know, I think it's important that we remember that this district is 1,100 acres. And when we encourage one architectural style in 1,100 acres, we will have a very homogeneous development. And I don't think that's necessarily what we want, for buildings to simply look like one another. Were you able to get any of that up there?
I am, Ann, yes. I'm just trying to display it. We're close.
We're close, good. I kind of need the pictures to be illustrative.
Claudia comes to the rescue.
Okay, so in under glass here, it talks about designers encouraged to maximize glass in the design of elevations. In this, it says, "The use of stone is encouraged, but should be limited to foundations and the ground level of an elevation." Which, interesting enough, the picture that it depicts has stone that goes all the way to the roof line. And it's a really attractive building. If they had limited that to the foundation, it would have stopped here. When we talk about wood, it's very prescriptive of what wood could be combined with. So I think that those last couple sentences from each of those should be struck if we are to pass this this evening. Can you go to the one page further, page 27? Okay, and under this architectural style component, it talks about glazing technologies, allowing buildings natural light, anything for sort. Creativity is part of the modern style. And so really, we're talking, we're trying to encourage creativity, but what we're doing is prescribe it. And you can't prescribe creativity. I feel like in this district, we need to allow the designers to design and to be creative. Certainly, this will go through all of the review processes that we have in place. But if we have 1,100 acres of a homogeneous architectural style, which is what all of this speaks to, it's going to be problematic. Because some of the most dated buildings that I can close my mind and think of are ones that are largely made of glass. that I can close my mind and think of are ones that are largely made of glass, and I think we certainly don't want to replicate this. Now, if we just struck this portion of architectural style, the rest of it works pretty well. When we, this, these sentences about scale and variation and transparency, although in variation, we have a typo, architects, R should try to, so I think that R is misplaced. Architects should try to, instead of R should try to. The rest of those work really well, and I think they're great, creative, encouraging statements, but I think the architectural style portion needs to be deleted from this. It's too prescriptive, and we're not going to let the architects, you know, what we want is the highest, the best materials that we can possibly get, and the most creative architectural work that we can possibly get, and when we tell them exactly what to do, we have cuffed their hands, and they're not going to be allowed to do those things. So, for me to support this, I think the planning, I want to be really clear, the planning of this is really good. The bubble diagrams of what goes where and how, all of that stuff is good, but the devil's going to be in the details, and if I were an architect and I were reading this, I would say, oh my goodness, I have to have a, I have to have a glass building that has a stone foundation and highlight trim in some point with either wood or clay. I don't think that's going to, in 1,100 acres. It would be different if it were one street.
Chris?
Yes.
You know what? I agree with you on the glass, where it says it is encouraged to predominate, be predominant material. I think that should be struck, and the next sentence should be struck. And then, when you move over to stone, it said, "The use of stone is encouraged." I completely agree with that. One thing I think is, this is just a normal materials list for this kind of zoning for a group area, and so, I agree, I think, you know, we don't want to over-direct them, but I think those issues you brought up are important and probably should be struck off, but also, having spent my whole life working with architects and their egos and their id's, I don't think you're going to have a direction for building 1,100 acres of the same thing. They're going to read this thing and take off in whatever direction the client tells them to, or they think the client wants them to go towards. So, I agree, I think, you know, this is just a sample policy sheet for material use, but I think, I agree with you, I think those last two sentences in glass should be struck, the stone one should be struck, the last one, because you might want to build an all-stone building. It might be beautiful. You know, when you start, when we, when we start thinking of this, we start thinking of the housing requirement in Dublin, which we all hate, where it says, just the Wayne's Coat has to be brick or stone, and then everybody else does it in hardy plank or vinyl or something. And instead of seeing houses with really nice stone facades, or stone all the way up to two stories, or integrating stone with wood, we don't really get a lot of that, so, no, I, no, I do agree with you. I think the rest of it is mentioning materials and, you know, clay, concrete, and metal, and glass, and wood. I think, I think it's okay. I think it's just a general kind of thing you see in these kind of zonings, so, but I do agree, I think those are too prescriptive.
I believe the architectural style paragraph is, we already, we already addressed that in the Architectural Composition on page 27. It talks about the composition, the massing, the scale, the variation, transparency, landscaping, we have, and those are really well-written, and they, they make perfect sense. When you get into the Architectural Style one, and you may be right, architects are going to throw caution to the wind and disregard what we ask them to do. I don't know that I'm willing to take that. Where's the risk reward in leaving it in?
No, I'm not saying that. What I'm thinking is, with 1,100 acres, an OU in there, and campus architects designing, they're going to tie probably that campus into some kind of cohesive architectural style, you know, that one section.
For me to support it in the architectural style, that, that descriptive nature of demanding glass buildings has got to go away.
Yeah, and so, I think some of that can be struck, but the rest of it is just a generic thing, saying, here's your material, this glass, stone, wood, concrete, clay, and metal, but I don't think we're, I think, a couple of those sentences are over-prescriptive, but I think the rest of it is generic.
Oh, yeah, like I said, the last two sentences here, and the last two there, and the last one on the, on the wood portion. It's not holistically, it's just the prescriptive portion. So, I guess my concerns remain the same concerns I had last time we talked about. Well, they're, they're 50% taken care of, because we did the public realm portion, and I appreciate that. The other half of them were these prescriptive natures, to have a monoculture of a homogeneous development on 1,100 acres. So, for me to support it, those things have to change.
Great.
Want us all to chime in, have a conversation?
Yeah.
I tend to agree with both John and with Chris. I think it is a little bit too prescriptive in nature. I think we're better if we talk more about character than we are necessarily prescribing how much of something should be used. I'd be very supportive of taking those few lines out of the page before that. I don't know if you can genericize, I don't know if that's a word, the architectural style of, you know, paragraphs that is a little bit more generic. I don't have any trouble leaving it in, per se, other than that it is a little bit prescriptive. And sitting down and talking with a couple of folks, you know, that know much more about architecture than I do, that would be their concern as well. You know, to John's point, I think that an architect's going to come in and do what their client wants, and that's what they're going to bring forward, but why make them think their hands are tied before they get to that process? Like, let the creative process take its, whatever path that is, for those who are more creative than I. But that's, so I'm voicing my support for that change.
It's, Tim and Amy, you want to chime in at all, or just, it seems as though there is support for removing some of this language, because I think we can still accomplish the goal of what this document intends to accomplish without getting too far down that road. Would you be, let me ask you this, Chris, are you able to tell us which sentences, or John and anybody else, that you would like to take out, and have, have we gone, I'll be honest with you, I have not read this word for word. I don't know that we have flushed out every over-prescriptiveness of.
I did read it twice today. It talks about, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with respect to where the materials are called out, the use of, I mean, the, the last sentence under stone, that the use of stone is encouraging but should be limited to foundations at the ground level, I mean, that seems very prescriptive. Underneath, you know, the, the glass narrative, designers are encouraged to maximize glass in the design of their elevations. I think that's open interpretation. I don't know what that means. That doesn't suggest to me that it should be an all-glass building. I certainly agree. I would guess we all agree that we don't want to see 1,100 acres of the same design. You know, when I read page 27, under Architectural Style, I see, "Due to advances in design tools and fabrication methods, buildings can have more organic and unique designs, and this is encouraged in the district." Organic and unique designs. Under Architectural Composition, architectural design should not be overly restrictive in the district relative to the composition of the architectural character of the buildings that would limit creativity. Under variation, architectural variety is encouraged. You know, so I see that, I guess that, that's what I read, you know, when, when I see this, but, you know, with respect to the stone, you know, I agree with you, that jumps out to me as being overly prescriptive, that it's only limited to foundations at ground level. So, anyway, just my thoughts.
Why don't we do this? If you're able to identify the sentences, that you would make a motion to delete the sentences, and then list them, and then we'll see what happens with that motion.
Okay. All right, under glass. Okay, it would start with, "It works with a range of scales and due to its versatility and function is encouraged to be a predominant material, predominant material." I don't know that we want to, that we would draw out any of these specifically that should be predominant.
So, so we're going to delete the first four, or the bottom four lines?
No, no, the ones you just identified. "It works in a range..."
Designers are encouraged to, the last two sentences, and then it says, "Designers are encouraged to maximize glass in the design of their elevations." The last two sentences.
Right.
Is that your motion?
Under glass, that's the first part. The second part, under stone, "The use of stone is encouraged, period, and strike, but should be limited to foundations and at the ground level of an elevation."
That's struck.
That's the second part of your motion.
That's the second part. The third part, under wood, is, "Used in contrast with the more weighty, cooler materials of brick, stone, metal, concrete to create a pleasant balance." Strike that last sentence.
That's the third portion of your motion.
The fourth and final portion, if you go to the next page. Okay, Tim, I agree. Under, if you could scroll up just a piece, "Under Architectural Composition and everything thereafter is very good. The addressing of massing and scale and variation and transparency, all of those are spot-on. The problem comes where we talk about just this paragraph under Architectural Style, and where we talk about everything needs to be, we outline the difference between contemporary architecture and modernistic style. All of this speaks to that."
What is, what about the second paragraph? Are you okay with the second paragraph?
It says, "Contemporary architecture starts with the technology." I would strike everything under Architectural Style, and then we could leave this Architectural Composition portion to stand on its own, because it is well-written. This Architectural Style is the prescriptive part. This is the guiding framework kind of ideology that I think is what we are looking for. That's my motion. It's a four-part motion.
Four-part motion, under glass, under stone, under wood, and striking the Architectural Style, two paragraphs.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask, with respect to the glass, you know, I agree with you, the reference made it being the predominant material, but with that line removed, I mean, I, I just think the author was intending to, you know, encouraging, to encourage architects, you know, to not overlook the use of glass. You know, so that's why, I mean, you know, the line that uses the term predominant, you know, I'm fine with that. You know, is there a way to wordsmith that last sentence, you know, to maintain the author's intent, what I think is the author's intent?
So, just so I understand, so the first is, "It works in a range of scales due to its versatility and function." It is encouraged, maybe we could just strike, "It works in a range of scales and due to its versatility, due to its versatility and function," remove the "and," and then strike the balance. So, it's, we leave the, "It works in a range of scales due to its versatility and function," period, and that's what we say about glass.
I'm sorry, is that encouraged?
And so, we remove the part speaks to predominant material, and we remove the part about encouraged to maximize glass. That we, you know, we, kind of, it's sort of redundant, those two sentences. It addresses that it should be the predominant material, and then it says, "We should maximize the use of glass."
So, you would propose deleting the bottom four lines?
That's correct.
Put in a period after the word function?
But, Tim, are you talking about sort of leaving in the encouraged piece?
Yeah, I, you know, we could spend the next four hours, you know.
They're going to be encouraged, too, because it's an inexpensive way to, to put a facade on a building. That's going to be encouraging. Price is going to be a driving factor.
So, you would, you would put the period at the end of encouraged?
At the end of function.
At the end of function, and then the bottom four lines would be gone. So, it would say, "It works in a range of scales and due to its versatility and function," period. I guess the word "and" comes out, so it just says, "It works in a range of scales due to its versatility and function."
Cool.
Okay.
I'm fine. I think, I think the author just didn't want to see concrete block buildings.
Yeah, no, I think you're right. And, you know, at the end of the day, this is a planning, you know, it's a planning document, it's just guidance, so, okay, so I think we have, Jennifer, are we allowed to do what we're doing here? Okay, so, we have a four-part motion to amend this document, to remove the four, bottom four lines of the word "glass," what we've already gone through with stone, what we've gone through with wood, and remove the Architectural Style, two paragraphs.
I just want to sanity check here before we, on that, may I? If you go to that next page, Tammy, under Architectural Style, I just want to make sure in that second paragraph that we're, there seems to be a lot of focus on sustainability as it relates to these buildings. I just want to make sure from the staff, we're not, and from Council, we're not missing the mark there. You know, when we talk about transparent buildings and glass and all this kind of, we're really talking about an ecosystem of building that's sustainable. I just want to make sure we're not dropping that out. So, please speak up, staff, if we're, if you're concerned about that. You get my point. I just want to make sure that piece of it's not left out accidentally. It could be, could be somewhere else back here, I'm just not seeing it.
Yeah, I, I saw that as well. I think that leaving that second paragraph in, well, it kind of gives, gives guidance to, hey, we're looking for a more sustainable building. You know, part of that is solar devices, green roofs, lots of glass.
Okay, so you go, I feel we're covered there?
If it helps under principles, the fifth principle is, "Sustainable development and construction practices should be a hallmark of all design development and site design approaches and operations."
All right, well, good. I just want to make sure.
So, I think we got that box checked.
Is there a, is there troublesome language in the second paragraph? Well, the most troublesome language is in the first paragraph, is it not?
The most troublesome is in the first, yes.
I'm not asking it be left in. I just want to make sure that piece of it, everyone's comfortable that it's covered, is all, because I know that was a big emphasis of the whole West Innovation District, is the, and we try to push that everywhere.
The second paragraph seems more philosophical.
It does.
I think we ought to leave that in.
Could we live with leaving in the second paragraph?
I could live with that.
Okay.
I hope to live with anything, but I will.
Your four-part motions, glass, stone, wood, and we remove the first paragraph under Architectural Style.
I will second the motion.
And this is just on the motion, then, to amend this document. Ann?
Ms. Salee?
Uncle, I should say, yes.
Mr. Lackleider?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Sammeros Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes. Thank you all for your indulgence.
Okay, it's more discussion on the document itself.
Not for me. I think it's good.
Yep, Chris, anybody, anybody else? Okay, Ann?
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Sammeros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lackleider?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Second reading, public hearing, ordinance 24-17, Ann?
Amending Dublin Codified Ordinance is to prohibit the sale or distribution of cigarettes, other tobacco products, or alternative nicotine products to persons under 21 years old to require licensure for the sale of tobacco and alternative products within the city of Dublin, and to authorize the city manager to contract with Franklin County Public Health to act as the city's agent for licensing tobacco and alternative nicotine product retailers.
Jen?
Good evening, Councilmembers. There have been no changes to this legislation since first reading. We did provide an extensive presentation at first reading. We're happy to do that again, and also happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Council?
No questions. I'm just thrilled that this is here.
There you go.
It's really the idea that we can prevent future generation from becoming addicted to tobacco. It's tremendous.
And I believe there was information placed that, can you mention who that was from?
It's from the American Lung Association.
A letter in support of the legislation.
Okay, great. Ann?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lackleider?
Yes.
Ms. Sammeros Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Ordinance 82-17?
Establishing the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018.
Dana?
There's no change from the previous presentation.
Questions from Council? Ann?
Sammeros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Mr. Lackleider?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ordinance 83-17?
Amending the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2017.
Dana?
Again, no change.
Any questions from Council?
I have one question. Under Section 1, it talks about the unexpected return. I know that the, or refunds, I'm sorry, I know that we were up last year on refunds a little bit unexpectedly, and that's carrying into apparently the first quarter here, and I'm, or the last, so I'm just kind of, are we anticipating more of these? Is this going to be a trend that we should expect to see continue, or is this another one-off that just happens to be on the tail end of a one-off?
No, this was a special refund that was delayed down into 2017. We don't expect any refund that size ever again, based on the credits and estimated payments we have at this time. It was a one-time deal.
Great, thank you. That's my only question.
Thanks, Bea. Ann?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lackleider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Sammeros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Ordinance 84-17?
Amending Chapter 97 of the Codified Ordinance regarding revising the sidewalk maintenance requirements.
Again, Mayor, there's no, no change to what was presented this last time, other than any questions you may have?
Questions from Council?
I have a couple of questions. I wasn't here at the last reading, so I apologize if any of this is redundant, but I had a couple of questions for Jennifer regarding if, if... I had a couple of questions for Jennifer regarding if we were to take ownership of the sidewalks essentially, or we would, the maintenance thereof. What would our legal implications be?
So we aren't taking full responsibility for sidewalks. The homeowner is still responsible for ice, any kind of nuisance, just basic maintenance like that.
Clearing, like?
Yes.
Okay.
And we did talk to our insurance provider about this. Our adjuster saw all the legislation and was comfortable with it. We'll still maintain our immunities even though we are maintaining in some sense the sidewalk when we've got the tree roots, or it's a city utility that's causing the damage to the sidewalk.
So for trip and fall?
Mm-hmm.
So we have now listed all of the sidewalks that we deem non-conforming, for lack of a better word, or in need of repair. And there's a trip and fall hazard on one of those items listed.
Yes.
And our responsibility is to the maintenance of those sidewalks. What is our exposure?
We will still retain immunity for that. And that's confirmed by their cases on point. I mean, just because the city maintains something doesn't mean you lose your immunity. So, and again, those attributable, you know, the tree roots and the city utilities, ultimately if there is a trip and fall that was, that was the source of the fall, they could still make a claim against the city. But we feel confident that we can use sovereign immunity as a defense, complete defense to that. And that this will not change, even though the maintenance function will be, I guess, even though it's different, we're putting it, we're making it more explicit in the code, it will not impact the immunity analysis that, you know, we've got a requirement to maintain our sewers, our streets, and everything like that. And so the court goes through an analysis each time there's an allegation that the city didn't adequately maintain. It'll remain the same with the whole sidewalk issue, and we'll still be able to argue immunity.
So public entities have significant immunity under law. The only, the only time that you're going to lose on that is if there is a proof of negligence. And in the case where, like, we may be made aware of a significant situation and we just choose to not fix it, then you may be at risk. However, that's not how we do business, and still, there's a high level of immunity for public entities under those kind of scenarios. So the key is to stay on top of the maintenance, know what the issues are, encourage our residents to help report issues, and for us to go out there and try to keep those repaired to the best of our ability. So that's, that's what we do.
So do we not feel like this potentially could open a can of worms in terms of getting every resident to say, y'all come fix my sidewalk? I think that would be my concern, and ensuring that we don't cause ourselves...
I think what I, I think what I tell you now, that is the, that's the expectation now. A lot of folks do, do feel that it's, it's the city's obligation to fix their sidewalk.
Why, why does that mean that we have to codify that? Like, why does that mean that we have to make that the case?
Well, it was the direction of city council some years ago to assume that policy, and that has, that has been our policy. I think the key here is that it's been a bit vague, and what we're trying to do is clarify the direction that we were given several years ago. And by codifying that, as both cities do, when you codify levels of responsibility and who has responsibility, now, this would be the approach that we would recommend, clean that up on the books. This is essentially how we've been acting as a city anyway, all this time.
And I will note that this isn't unusual, this sort of attributing the city to be responsible for sidewalk repair when it's, you know, a tree root, a tree root or a utility. This is, we used Upper Arlington's legislation as a model in drafting this. So that's another central Ohio community who uses the same type of language.
Do they, they repair the sidewalks?
Yes.
Don't you even have to pay to pick, have your garbage picked up in Upper Arlington?
Yes.
Wow.
Just to encourage you.
I guess so.
I guess, you know, the codification is a little confusing to me. Basically, what we, what we've been doing is we're going to replace your sidewalk if we have funds and it's part of our program, right? It's not a mandatory thing. And I think that's where we don't want to go, depending if we have another 2008 or...
Right. And that's a great point. You know, we've implemented a number of measures to try to curb the cost, no pun intended, of the maintenance of sidewalks. So we've implemented the shaving program, very, very effective at leveling off uneven sidewalks without having to do a total replacement. That's become a very popular program and one that's worked very well for us. We will continue to use that significantly to defer replacement of sidewalk, but then where sidewalk it's necessary to replace, that's where we're budgeting more over time. Now, we cannot fix everything in one year. And you've got, you approved a five-year CIP. I think the number is at about, it's $250,000 a year for every year to work towards about a $3 million challenge in repairing sidewalks, and repairing and replacing sidewalks.
So I guess maybe to John's point a little bit is, you know, maybe we consider language that says that, and I don't know, I'm not the right person to design the language, but that, you know, we get to decide based on the available funds and what we have available to do these. I don't want it to be, you know, like, well, how come you fixed, you know, Suzie Creamcheese's sidewalk, but you didn't fix mine and I requested it first? And there could be any number of reasons for that. It could be funding, it could be the severity of it, what have you. And so I guess my concern would be that there would be this viewpoint, that there would be some level of favoritism for some reason or another. And I just, I don't want that kind of, you know, arbitrary decision-making to be what the optics are, even if that's not really the case. I'm not saying that we would do that. I'm just saying that it could be viewed that way. So could we sort of maybe tighten that up just a little bit so that we're, you know, I just don't want it to be a, well, it's first come, first served, or it's based on severity, or it's, what is it based on if we're going to be responsible for repairing all these sidewalks unless it's clear that it's, you know, something that the homeowner has done to damage the sidewalk, like parking heavy equipment or what have you? You know, how do we know what that's going to be? And maybe Megan has the answer. I see her strolling up to the mic, so thanks for indulging me.
Well, I was just... I was just going to mention that our proposal was based on our asset management program. So our proposal was to treat the sidewalks just as we would treat our street maintenance program. So every year we would do a condition assessment, we would do a rating, and then we as staff would prioritize the repairs that are needed around the city. So we would come up with a maintenance system, just a prioritization system, just as we have with our, for our other assets that we're responsible for maintaining.
I guess I have two quick comments and then a question, maybe for Jen. I know that this council has been dogging this issue for over a decade now. Late, I know in the memos, it started in 2004 and probably existed even before that. So I know the council's been very committed. And I know, Tim, given probably the age and the location and all that of the neighborhoods in your ward, I mean, this is a real problem. And I know you've been very concerned about it for a long time. So I know that it's an issue that needs to be taken care, and we have been taking care of it in that way. The thing that in my mind popped, that occurred to me when we did our sewer extensions, like, we didn't have that codified. And so if, if we have another 2008, if we have another market collapse, we can suspend our sewer extension program, can't we? And say, look, we just can't do this right now. We aren't on a, we're not, we didn't pass an ordinance that gave us a schedule where we are required to do a certain thing. We can always sort of suspend that program. So I'm, I'm wondering if in Christina's thought of changing the language, does this upset the goal you're trying to accomplish with this? If we changed the city how, shall, as it currently says, the city shall be responsible for, if we changed it to, the city shall strive to provide for the repair and replacement of sidewalk curbs and gutters when practicable and at the discretion of the city manager, except when determined? Does that, or does that get us back into the foggy area where you don't know?
Puts us right back, well, thanks for giving it to me.
Yeah.
Puts it right back in, which is on me, kind of, as city manager, not me, but, I mean, it is foggy because that... It's foggy, yeah. I want to, I want to call your attention back to, you know, the staff did research and found that cities do not commonly replace sidewalks, except when they're damaged by street trees. When they're damaged by street trees, cities commonly replace them. I would venture to say that's probably our biggest problem, I would think. And...
Yeah, I think the estimate that we provided in here showed that it was about roughly two-thirds of the issues out there are due to street trees and utilities.
So really what we're saying is if we, if we as the city have damaged it, if it has, if the street tree has damaged it, if a utility line that belongs to the city has damaged it, or in the course of our construction has damaged it, the city, probably in all those scenarios, is going to wind up having responsibility anyway. It's on the backside of that sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the, and the house, where the homeowner plants something or does something that then causes the, the damage. It would, I think, I think it would be pretty clear, it would be on the homeowner. It was also the private service line that might be coming from water, gas, sanitary sewer, some other utility that would come underneath the sidewalk. And as a result, that private service line, then, you know, which is generally behind the curb line, is going to be the responsibility of the resident. So I think when you start subtracting all that out, it's pretty much going to fall on the city in most, in most cases, except for that.
Yep. Now... I think we're in agreement with you on that, because that is the city's responsibility. And I think what we're curious about is if it comes to time that we don't warny all the rest of the problems, where I know we're the, I think we're the only municipality that goes out and replaces everybody's sidewalks, right? That I know of.
No. Apparently in Ohio, or what we've been given here, no, but there are some, Arlington, for example, it says the city shall perform all necessary repairs, replacement of sidewalk damaged by tree growth at city expense. That's the one they cover. All other things are the responsibility of the homeowner.
Which kind of makes sense, because the city required the tree to go in there in the first place.
Right.
Sure. I mean, I get that.
And that's the vast majority of the communities.
And I get...
It's pretty consistent across the board that this is the responsibility of the street trees.
I think we're in agreement with what you're suggesting and proposed, but I think what we're wondering about is, do we want this totally binding?
Yes.
Permanently, as a permanent issue for all sidewalks? I mean, once we pass this thing, that's what we're saying. Okay, we're taking, it starts out, we're taking, the city desires, well, to assume the responsibility. And I think what we're curious about, and was Greg alluded to, what happens if we get to the position where, as a city in the future, and then we don't want to bind future city councils to the fact that you have to go out and replace everybody's sidewalks for free? So we're just sort of wondering, and in total agreement with what Dana said, you know, if it's our responsibility, we should fix it. But I think that's the one question we have in our minds.
Well, and also just, this is a total personal, my personal experience in front of my house. I know that our neighborhood, the sidewalks were replaced, and they came through and they replaced, I didn't think it needed replaced, but they replaced a section right next to the street tree, and then two sections was left, and then another section, and then two sections were left. And it looks like a checkerboard, just the aging and the wear and the, you know, I've got these bright, clean, brand-new cement sections, and then right next, and I power wash my sidewalk every year, and it, it looks like a checkerboard. My next-door neighbor, they replaced the entire stretch. So they have this nice, long, white sidewalk. And in front of me, it looks like a checkerboard. What happens when you have somebody like me that comes to you and says, that's not good enough? You need to replace the rest of this? And you start getting people pounding on the table with this, I almost think that we have no choice but to just replace the whole thing. I don't know. I mean, I guess what I would like to do is leave you with some discretion, but I guess the discretion is what causes the confusion.
Greg, my street was, after 25 years, repaved a year ago. And I have a corner lot, and because of ADA requirements and things they need to do with the ramp and so forth, they had to replace a couple of sections in either direction. So I've got new concrete next to concrete that's 25 years old. You know, is it aesthetically pleasing? I mean, it is what it is. It's, it's, it's a sidewalk and it meets ADA requirements. And so, you know, I'm, I'm happy that it was done, you know, as it should be done. You know, the conversation's interesting and good questions being asked. I guess, I guess one question I would ask is, is the new standard, you know, if, if other communities aren't doing it, then we're not going to do it. I mean, that's, that's, I don't think that's ever been our approach, you know, to sidewalks or anything else. And I, I'm not aware of an ordinance, you know, that cannot be amended at a later date or repealed, you know, if, if there are issues regarding funding or it proves unworkable. But, you know, we've had a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I believe the, the language that we've proposed, our intent was to accomplish just what we're talking about here, which is, you know, the city's responsible unless it's the property owner's responsibility, what am I trying to say? The city's responsible for the maintenance, especially when it's tree root or city utilities or something for which the city is responsible for.
Megan, how much... Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I didn't realize you weren't finished. Go ahead.
That's okay. I don't know what I was going to say now.
I apologize. Sorry. How much heartburn is this giving you? Is this something that you're needing to deal with on a daily, weekly, monthly basis of difficulty of trying to determine the cause? And, you know, I saw the backlog was fairly significant. It was, it was either 306 or 603. I can't remember which off the top of my head. But there was a significant backlog.
It's between 2.5 and 3 million.
Is our current policy and code causing a tremendous amount of difficulty for you to navigate?
The, the lack of clarity is definitely a challenge for staff. You know, our website and the message from staff has been, maintenance of sidewalks is the property owner's responsibility. And inevitably, they will point out, but you don't let me touch the street tree. We can't maintain the street tree, only the, the city can maintain the street tree. But by code, the code says maintenance is the adjacent response, adjacent property owner's responsibility. So it is a difficult conversation. And many, many property owners, when they call in, are surprised to hear that it's the property owner's responsibility for maintenance, so that's a whole other conversation. And I guess from staff's perspective, our primary objective is to make sure that the sidewalks are maintained. Most communities are able to ensure that the property owners maintain their sidewalk. They have the tool of assessments. That has been discussed over the years, and there hasn't been the desire to go the route of assessment. So without an assessment, it's really difficult for staff to require property owners to maintain their sidewalks.
I don't, I don't think anybody, I don't, at least, I don't, I don't think the issue with anybody appears that the homeowner should pay for. I don't think anybody, I mean, we're all, so we're all in the same place on that. The concern is tying the staff's hands if a situation arises where we wish our hands wouldn't have been tied. And so maybe we just focus on that last sentence that says the city shall determine when such repair or replacement is necessary. So you still have the discretion. It says right in there that it's up to you.
Can you repeat that again?
That last sentence says, "The city shall determine when such repair or replacement is necessary."
Right.
So.
And that's the key. And I think the other key part of that, you know, if you're, obviously, cost is always a concern. We've got about a, between a two and a half and a $3 million situation here, which, you know, we, we up the money over the next, you did, up over the, over the next five years and beyond, assuming, to try to get that caught up and, and get out ahead of it. But, you know, you always control, council always controls the budget and the purse string. So you can, you know, ratchet that up, ratchet that down, or whatever. So what we're just saying is, you know, in terms of the funding allocated, and what we're doing now that, that Megan mentioned that we hadn't been doing as well, is we, we have the capacity now to do a very proactive inventory and a, and a, and an assessment of sidewalks, like we do our pavement program, that we didn't have before. So now, and that's what all these numbers reflect, is how we got that inventory and assessment done, and then we realized the level of the problem we had, that from, in 2004, that was estimated to be 160,000. Now it's north of 2.5 million.
So, you know, the reality is, is that this is the public's expectation. You know, regardless of what the website might say or otherwise, this is the public's expectation. And it is an asset, and, and I would argue it's an asset, not unlike our bike paths. You know, and it's an asset that, that we need to maintain. And if the city isn't going to take responsibility for it, and the city isn't going to fund it, you know, then, you know, council needs, you know, to bite the bullet and, and assess the property owners, you know, and, and, you know, stop, stop delaying. I mean, you go through a neighborhood, you go through some of these neighborhoods, you know, where the sidewalks have been there 30, 40 years, you know, and, and they're heaved as, you know, again, as a result of tree roots, you know, in many cases, you know, the city's going to have a responsibility to replace them anyway. So, I mean, in essence, it seems to me that we're codifying a large percentage of what we're already doing. And we're making a statement with respect to the fact that it's a valued asset, and we want to make sure that it's well maintained.
I certainly don't disagree with that. But the language on the ordinance itself, "Whereas the city desires to amend Section 97.21 for the city to assume responsibility for the repair or replacement of the sidewalk, curbs or gutters, except when the city manager determines damage to the sidewalk, curbs or gutters, is caused by the owner or occupant of abutting lands." I think what you're setting yourself up to right there is a potential conflict in every instance to try to determine the cause, you know, and, and you get into chicken and egg sort of conversation. And if we want to say tree roots, then we should say that when the cause of the city to, or the cause of the sidewalk to be in disrepair is due to tree roots, yes, that's our tree, and we damaged that con, that sidewalk, and it, and we should replace it. That should be our responsibility. But this doesn't, this, this includes everything on us, except for if we know they damaged it. Everything else is on us.
Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong. This whereas language is the preamble and is not the law. The law is found under Section 1. Am I right?
Yeah, but similar language is used in Section B of the, Section 1, Part B. The first sentence is consistent with that whereas clause.
Right. With the last sentence that says, "The city shall determine when such repair or replacement is necessary."
Right. Correct.
I think we actually started at one point, if I recall, we started to march down a list of reasons why we would, we would say, the city manager would say, "Well, it's on you," and then it's on the city, and then that list got pretty long. And that's where we said, even if you list that out, you're going to find some gray area.
Yep.
So, you know, if a utility company comes along and damages the sidewalk, we're going after the utility company and their insurance company. If a private, and we do this all the time, someone hits a guardrail, we're not paying for the guardrail as a city. We're going after whoever got cited, and we're going after their insurance company. So we do these kind of things. So I think there's all kinds of reasons, I guess, why a sidewalk could, one thing I look at is just deterioration. If somebody puts too much hot melt on their sidewalk, and it's, and it causes the sidewalk to sc, to peel apart, is that really the city's fault? I mean, there's going to be some nuances. There'll probably be a few arguments over this, I admit. We could, we could try to create a list of, of these scenarios, as many as we could try to come up with and try to codify that, but I don't, I, we, we actually made an attempt at that, and it got pretty crazy.
And then also, as we were doing that, also, then we went back and reviewed the history and the council record, and we, we believe that the intent of council over the years had been.
Yeah, and really, what we're trying to do is codify the direction that staff got in 2004. And I just have to sit here and tell you, I don't know why that never got codified. And what was, the direction in 2004 was, the city will take responsibility for the sidewalks. And I understand, I appreciate you're trying to give more definition to how the city manager determines who's.
Could we amend any of this language to say that the city will endeavor to repair any sidewalks? You know, shall, those kind of words, will, those kind of words scare me a little bit because they, you know, if, if we would ever find ourselves in a position that we couldn't spend $3 million a year to replace sidewalks to get up to.
You could say, "The city, to the best of its ability, will repair or replace," and then leave the rest of it in place.
I think language like that is completely appropriate.
Because the best of our ability comes down to affordability.
Or we will endeavor to.
And, yeah. I'm, I'm fine with that.
I mean, I think that's what we were suggesting earlier.
That's right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Well, and I think our intent with that last sentence of be, you know, "The city shall determine when such repair or replacement is necessary," I think that was our intent, was to.
Right, but that speaks to the, the repair necessitating the repair, like, the replacement or whatever, as opposed to other situations that might dictate whether or not we would do something.
I got caught up in the list of the reasons why or why not, so I apologize.
Right. It's all good. You know, just out of the gate, the city shall be responsible for the repair or replacement of the sidewalk.
Okay. What may I offer a couple of suggestions? First, the city, consistent with what Dana suggested, to the best of its ability, shall be responsible for the repair. And then the last sentence preface that with, "In all cases, the city shall determine when such repair or replacement is necessary." So we've got two qualifiers.
I'm far more comfortable with that.
That's fine.
I'm far more comfortable with that.
I think that's what we're looking for. Okay.
I make a motion to amend this language to what Jennifer just said.
Second.
On the amendment, Ann.
Ms. Alito.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner.
Yes.
Sam Rosegroom.
Yes.
And on amended 84-17.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Ms. Alito.
Yes.
Ms. Sam Rosegroom.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you. That's been a long time trying to figure out. I appreciate that a lot.
85-17, Ann.
Repealing Section 115.10, permit to solicit charitable contributions on highways of the Dublin codified ordinances.
Jen?
There have been no changes since first reading. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Hearing none, Ann.
Vice Mayor Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Sam Rosegroom.
Yes.
Ms. Alito.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
First reading is ordinance 86-17, Ann.
Res zoning approximately 5.86 acres from PCD, planned commerce district, to PUD, planned unit development district. Court amendment to the approved development text to increase the permitted density and to comprehensively update sign provisions. This is for the perimeter center subarea. Aye.
Hang on. Tim has to say, I'll introduce.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Nikki.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of council. This evening, we have ordinance 8617, Crown Mercedes, before you tonight. This was most recently reviewed before the Planning and Zoning Commission on November the 2nd, where they made a recommendation of approval for both rezoning with a preliminary development plan, and actually approved a final development plan at that meeting. Therefore, you will see a bit more detail than you would typically see with a rezoning as part of this application. However, we've included it for your reference this evening. As mentioned, this is a 5.86 acre parcel. The site is located south of Mercedes Drive and north of perimeter loop road. A bit of background is summarized for council this evening on the slide. The 285 acres that is the perimeter center PCD was originally zoned back in 1988. However, the most recent rezoning for this site happened in 2002. There were some altered development standards. Subsequently, there have been many revised and amended final development plans that have been approved for the various automotive dealerships within the Crown campus. Perimeter Center is a fairly large and fairly old planned district within the city of Dublin. Here, I've highlighted subarea I. Subarea I is comprised of three parcels, which make up the Crown campus. This evening, for council's consideration, is the westernmost parcel only. With this rezoning, staff and the applicant have worked together to develop a framework that memorializes the existing zoning standards, previously approved conditions, and then also the requests before council this evening for increased density and a comprehensive amendment to the sign provisions. So the only subarea for rezoning tonight is subarea A, which is the Crown Mercedes dealership. The proposed site plan is available for council's review on the screen. There are three building additions proposed with this rezoning, which required the rezoning for a density above and beyond what the existing development text would permit. Cumulatively, those additions are about 8,000 square feet and contain a showroom, a service reception, and then eight new internal service bays. So there'll be no additional overhead doors with any of those. Depicted here is an architectural rendering. As you can see, located near the intersection of Mercedes Drive, which is a private drive, and perimeter loop road, is the showroom addition. So you'll see the removal of the masonry wing walls that exist on the site today in favor of a black metal wing panel that architecturally connects the existing showroom to the addition. Next, located centrally in the building, you'll see the service addition. And then furthest to the east and most visible along perimeter loop road, you'll see the extension of the service area of the dealership. And this will have a seamless appearance with the way the structure looks today. Finally, I will discuss the amendments to the sign plan. This is the existing sign plan that's located on the site today. And I've, I've tried to break it out by sign type. Total signs on the campus today are nine. There's one campus ID sign at the intersection of Mercedes Drive and perimeter loop that I'm sure you're all familiar with. One brand ID sign, which is visible from US 33 along perimeter loop, which I'm sure you've also seen. Interior to the campus, there are some directional signs. And then also, along the perimeter edge, there are also some directional signs. This is the proposed sign plan, and I apologize for the error in the PowerPoint title. A total of 12 signs are proposed. That's three additional from what's existing today. The development text creates a framework that is intended to be applicable not only to this site, but would be applicable to the other dealership sites, should a rezoning be required in the future. So you can see the breakout of the different sign types. The campus ID sign is intended to define the Crown Automotive Campus as a whole. The brand ID signs specifically call out the Mercedes brand itself within the context of the greater campus. Perimeter wayfinding signs are intended to provide some direction within the campus and identify the brand from the other two brands. And the address numeral sign is intended to simply define where the site is located. In detail, you'll see the existing sign on perimeter loop is refaced. These are permitted to be a maximum of 50 square feet, not to exceed 12 feet in height, where code would permit 15. The other brand ID sign is a combination of a building-mounted and ground-mounted sign. So this is not permitted to exceed 50 square feet, and it's mounted at 15 feet to the top of the sign in height. The brand identification is limited to a total of 35 square feet. Despite being a circle, it's measured as a square. A maximum of two are permitted, and to the top of the sign, it's a maximum of 15 feet in height. Perimeter wayfinding signs do exist on the site today, although it's, the history is unclear as to how they were permitted, as typically the city would not allow signs that are this large or include brand names. However, staff with the receipt of this application has worked with the applicant to minimize the size of those signs, and then also to cohesively create a design to provide a bit of wayfinding along the edge of the campus. A maximum of three are permitted at eight square feet and a maximum of four feet in height. Brand logos are prohibited, so it would be permitted to say Mercedes, but there wouldn't be any additional imagery on that sign. Interior wayfinding signs are actually per code. This is the directional sign provision in the code, and all those standards are met and provided for in the development text. Therefore, a sign permit would not be required, and a maximum of four of these signs would be permitted. The sign that we're probably all familiar with at the intersection of Mercedes Drive and perimeter loop would actually change over to just an address. Based on Planning and Zoning Commission's review, the commission and staff are recommending approval to city council at their meeting on January 9th. I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have this evening regarding the proposal, and the applicant is here as well tonight.
Thanks, Nikki. Questions from council?
I have just, just a few. I promise I will attempt to be quick. It appears that there are no new overhead door bays being added, and I just wanted to verify and make sure that I read the drawings correctly.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. There are some existing trees that are going to be removed with the expansion of that service bay.
Correct.
And there are a number of trees on the exterior mounding that are indicated in the tree survey that are either dead or dying. Will those trees be transplanted into those dead or dying locations, or can we ask them to do that because they appear to be in good health and are of an appropriate size that could be moved?
Certainly something that we can look into.
With a tree spade. And then my last question is, this is a conditional use that's, or that these signs are tied to this user. If a new user were to come in, the sign plans would have to come back if they were changing logos and text and colors.
The way that the development text is written is, it's highly prescriptive and descriptive based on the use. Therefore, I would anticipate that a rezoning would be required if the user changed.
So because of the colors that they utilize, grays and blues, more subdued, more earth tones, to me, they would be far more objectionable if they were orange and red and purple, things like that nature. So I just wanted to make sure that if this user were to go away and a new user were to occupy that wasn't the Mercedes Benz, that we would have the right to review these signs because I think color matters.
Color isn't provided for in the development text. However, an amended final development plan would be required because it's a planned district. So the Planning and Zoning Commission would have purview over those details at that time.
Thank you. If you could follow up with those trees, or if we could add that, those are all my questions. Thank you.
I think the, this is a big architectural improvement. These guys have done a really great job as the entry feature into our city. Each piece of architecture has been more interesting than the last, and so, and then internally, and I've been inside their area, I think the wayfinding signs are really important if you're driving around in there. I like the way they've now codified them, and they upgraded the, the stanchions on either side. And they've really done, I think, a, a job to make this whole thing a big improvement to what it was, so, thank you.
Anything else from council? Judge, you got anything?
No, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Ann? No, I guess we're not doing anything other than, I guess she'll be back on January 9th, huh? All right, we'll see you on January 9th.
Thank you.
Well, you have opportunity to make some, maybe include some of those things and do some, a little bit of looking at the tree issue.
Absolutely.
Before you come back to us.
Yeah. We can follow up with you.
Thank you.
Ordinance 87-17, Ann.
Accepting annexation of 44.0 acres, more or less, from Jerome Township, Union County to the city of Dublin.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Tim. Dana? Jen? Someone?
Good evening, council members. The Union County Commissioners approved this annexation on May 25, 2017. Under the Ohio Revised Code, the clerk of council is required to keep that record for 60 days before placing it on council's agenda. That period was delayed in this case because the Jerome Township trustees filed an appeal of the annexation approval to the Union County Court of Common Pleas. Jerome Township dismissed that appeal on November 7, 2017. The next step is for council to consider whether or not to accept the annexation. If approved at the second reading, ordinance 87-17 will be effective 30 days later. Now, once the property is annexed to Dublin, it will automatically be rezoned to the R Rural District. So if the property owner wants to do anything other than that specified in that district, they will have to pursue a rezoning and receive recommendation of planning commission and an approval of city council. Staff recommends approval of this ordinance for multiple reasons. First of all, annexation of this area would provide a clear line of demarcation on Highland Croix Road. Additionally, the subject properties within the proposed annexation area provided in the Dublin Community Plan and is in the exclusive Dublin Service Area in both the water and sewer agreements with City of Columbus. No other entity can provide these services. Finally, all procedural requirements under the Ohio Revised Code for annexation have been met, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
So just for a point of clarity, we, we can't withdraw the annexation. That is not something that we can do.
Correct. There is no.
No provision in the law of which we can do that.
Right. Withdrawal is only permitted at the beginning before the county commissioners have the hearing.
So that is a need of our decision to make.
It is not.
Thank you.
How does this affect our responsibility in terms of roadwork and the intersection at Highland Croix and Post Road? And I ask that because we get lots and lots of questions about it.
Correct. This annexation does not include any right-of-way, and so we will not be responsible for any additional areas of Highland Croix Road.
Although, should there be development on this property in the future, under a development agreement, an infrastructure agreement, we would probably require that that developer -- we would assess the impact of that development and then have them contribute to future improvements of the roadway in a proportionate manner and improvements, projected improvements to intersections, turn lanes, and the like.
Would that require us to partner with Union County? Because that road there is Union County's responsibility.
Right, we would definitely do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll see everybody back on January 9th on that as well. Resolutions, Resolution 86-17.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a service agreement with Continental Broadband Pennsylvania LLC, doing business as Expedient Communications to expand the Dublin Transport 100 gigabit program.
I'll introduce it. Colleen?
Good evening. Tonight, we have a recommendation regarding the expansion of our Dublin 100 gig fiber-optic program. The city has leveraged this program and this infrastructure as a means to save costs, generate revenue, and retain, expand, create, and attract new companies and jobs. This recommendation would expand the program beyond Metro Center and would add a second data center as a provider. Currently, we have 13 buildings that are lit by this fiber optics. We have two more under construction, and currently, we have 26 companies on the program, and it has resulted in the retention and/or the creation of 304 jobs just in the Metro Center area. This agreement would expand to a second data center in Dublin, which is expedient, and they would be allowed to add 20 more buildings over three years. And in order to take advantage of the program, I just want to remind you that the main features are cost and choice. So by adding another choice of a provider of a data center, it would also be competitive in cost. We are definitely targeting our legacy office buildings first, so high vacancy and the older buildings receive preferential treatment to get the laterals installed. So I can answer any questions about our recommendation to expand the program.
Questions from council? Chris?
I just have one question, since I wasn't here when this original -- with this other provider happened in 2015. It talks about entering into a contract. Is this a change of money? Are we -- what is the nature of said contract?
We would be giving them access to our city-owned Dublin Fiber in return for them running this program for us, and then they would be responsible to build the infrastructure into the office buildings and attach it to our system.
That's probably why I didn't read any -- there were no dollar signs in the agreement.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Anne?
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Amaro Scrooms?
Yes.
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Resolution 87-17?
Approving a term sheet for the purchase of property located at 5555 Perimeter Drive, Dublin, Ohio, for municipal purposes.
Good evening, members of council. Before you this evening is a resolution to approve a term sheet.
Anne asking for an introduction.
Pardon me?
Mr. Leckleider, would you?
Tim?
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Go ahead, Donna. Start.
Thank you. My apologies. Good evening again, members of council. Before you this evening is a resolution to approve a term sheet for the purchase of property located at 5555 Perimeter Drive for municipal purposes. The property totals 2.58 acres and is improved with a two-story building, which was constructed in 2010, and comprises of approximately 20,000 square feet in area. While further study is required to fully understand the city's programmatic needs, the availability of this property provides a unique opportunity to fulfill the city's 1997 and 2007 community plan objective, wherein Kaufman Park and adjacent property would serve as the civic and government center for the city of Dublin. The city currently owns 108 acres that surrounds and is adjacent to this property that includes the Justice Center, the Recreation Center, City Hall, and Kaufman Park. This property's 2.58 acres is the only piece within the civic center as defined in the community plan that the city does not currently own. With council's approval of the term sheet for the purchase of the property for $4 million, we will begin the due diligence process with the expectation of bringing forth a real estate purchase agreement for council's review at the January 9, 2018, meeting. With that, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Hearing none. Anne?
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Amaro Scrooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Thanks, Donna. Okay, under the other portion of our agenda, Final Plat Riviera, Section 4, Parts 1 and 2. Claudia? See, Anne, I did that for you. I read the whole title there. I read the whole title.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
We don't usually read those titles.
We don't read those anyways.
Sorry, somebody closed my presentation, so I'm going to have to navigate here for a minute. Good evening, mayor and members of council. This is a plat review for Riviera, which is Section 4, Parts 1 and 2. And just a quick overview, this is the site outlined in yellow as part of the overall Riviera development. And in terms of the background, you haven't seen anything regarding Riviera for about a year or so. So this was thoroughly reviewed by council as well as the planning commission throughout 2014. As part of the concept plan, we did a lot of neighborhood engagement with the adjacent residents, and the Planning and Zoning Commission in April of 2015 recommended approval of the rezoning to council, who then took action in June of that year. As typical with final development plans in neighborhoods, the developments get approved in sections, so we did Sections 1 and 2 in 2016 in April, and then Sections 3 in 2016 in May. And this, Section 4, is the very last one that you would see within the neighborhood and then build out what happens. So the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval in April of this year, and infrastructure has been completed and approved, and so the plating is the last step for that to be finalized and for lots to be able to be sold as well. If you recall, this is the sub-area map, so we have three different types of sub-areas that are really different in terms of the size of the lots. And the central one, the red one there, is where the Section 4 is also in existence. There are two parts with this for recording. One, Section 1 includes lots 138 through 158, and then 179 through 185, and it has a very small reserve there at the bottom. And it plats this connection of Temple Falls Drive to the south there, which is in Belvedere. And then Section 4, Part 2, has lots 159 and through 178, and it has that 15 acres of open space surrounding all of those lots on this cul-de-sac. And it also provides right-of-way for the extension of Catchy Lane, which will intersect with Highland Croix in the future. And here are those details a little bit more laid out. So with that, we are, as has the Planning and Zoning Commission in April, requesting that council accept this plat, and then we would have Myler sign and get those recorded with the county. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
Was there much discussion? I did read through the meeting minutes. I didn't see a lot of discussion about lot width.
Because that is something that is approved as part of the ordinance in the development text?
All of the lot width for this section?
For all the sections.
Was in the development agreement?
Development text. It's the zoning regulations.
Well, they're awful narrow.
Any other questions from council?
I have a question. When this first came in, there was some responsibility for the city to maintain the common ground, and we were going to implement a program for maintaining -- or planning that out, try to minimize the maintenance. Did any of that get launched, or where are we at at that, do you know, by any chance?
Absolutely. So the plat includes in the coded notes there on each of the second pages, the open space maintenance responsibilities for these open spaces that are part of this particular application, as have the previous ones for the other sections. So particularly for this area, the 15 acres, that is one of the heavily planted wooded woodland restoration areas, and the city is to maintain that, and the applicant has throughout the development phases planted trees and replaced here. So nothing has changed from the approval of the ordinance with the maintenance responsibilities that the city has or the tree replacement that was approved as part of that original approval.
I thought, though, you know, that rather than mow all those acres, we, at the time, sat down and said, we're going to implement a program, whether it be planting out tree liners, like Christmas trees take from seven to 10 years to mature, and just turn them into a forest so we don't have to go down and mow and mow and mow, you know?
Definitely.
Because the way this thing worked, we were responsible for this till the end of time, and it was more land than really was needed for park space, and there was a lot of already green space in this thing. So I was just curious, like, did we start that program? Did we put out the liners? Or are we trying to? Because I guess the bottom line is, we're trying to minimize our expenses over the next infinity, since we're responsible for it.
Yeah.
And how far did we get with that program? Where are we with that program?
Matt, can you speak to that?
I mean, we're in the thick of it. We have very, very few mowed areas and a variety of trees that really are intended to avoid perpetual maintenance, but I will.
You'll recall, the larger reserve was the bigger question. I believe it was the Phase 3 section of this. I don't remember the number of trees that were planted for that section, but it was over 1,000 trees of a variety of species, different diameters, understory, overstory type of thing, so that when it does mature, it will be immature forest.
Wow. So how many years are we -- did we plot that out? Is that a -- are we going to maintain this for three to five years till that's expected to fill in? Or what was the time line on that?
We will need to go in periodically and knock down the invasives and the unwanted species that will come in, the volunteer pioneer species that'll come in and take over. But, you know, over the, you know, three to five-year timeframe, that will start to diminish, and then we won't need to go in, but maybe just inspect for, you know, honeysuckle and some of those more aggressive types of things that we'll need to keep an eye on.
How many acres will we end up maintaining for the developer, then? After, let's say we've taken out that whole section, and it becomes a, really, a great forest, and 300 years from now, people saying, boy, there was super insight on the city of Dublin to do this. But how many acres are we going to still be responsible to maintain?
I'll have to look back into that exactly, but I know it's more than 50 acres.
We're going to mow?
No.
No, okay, good.
No.
That's what I'm interested in.
The only thing that we will be mowing is the space between our forested areas and the property lines of the backs of the houses to keep that buffer.
And do we have any idea how many acres that's going to be?
I don't know.
It seemed like we cut that back down to less than 10 acres, but it's very linear because it's mostly along roadways and in streetscaping, and we really converted a big portion of that dedicated area, as Matt is mentioning, to be a future forest, wooded lot, so hence all the effort on the tree plantings and so forth.
And even those mowed areas aren't going to be done weekly like we do on most areas. They will be done every couple of months or so as needed.
Yeah, the agreement going into this was to keep this as natural as possible and as little mowing as possible.
Matt, were those seeded, or were they around where this woodland was planted? Was it a seeded area, or was it allowed to just go natives, or?
Are you referring to the buffer zone that I was?
In the midst of the woodland where the 1,000-plus trees are planted, was that area seeded, or was it just left rough vegetation?
Most of it was left rough vegetation with the unwanted species removed. I'll have to go back and check, but I think that there was a prescription for some fescues and things like that to create that understory that we did want in there. But I'll have to double-check and see what those areas were.
My question really was driving to if we had the ability to apply a broadleaf herbicide sort of situation there, where we could keep it grasses in the understory, rather than try to come in and selectively remove invasive species to blanket-treat those areas and have a little bit cleaner until the woodland caught on.
Yeah, I do believe the spacing of the trees will allow that to happen, regardless of what we did with the understory plantings, but I'll double-check that as well.
Thank you.
We'll report back on that status. I apologize, can't remember the acres off the top of our head between what's mowable and what we're trying to turn back to woodland, so we'll get you a follow-up on that. I know it's just significantly going back to natural.
Yeah, you know, I'd like to still investigate increasing that because I just hate the liability of mowing a, you know, project that isn't active parkland or passive parkland and being tied to that financially forever. Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the final plat. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amaro Scrooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Preliminary and final plats, Town Place Suites. Claudia?
Yes. This is a preliminary and a final plat for a hotel that got approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier this month, and it requires some replating of existing lots, actually. This site is on the south side of Upper Metro Place, and adjacent is the Home 2 Hotel there, just to the northeast. And here's the existing plat for Upper Metro Place, and there is the lot in question that is being replatted as part of this application. And here's a little bit more detail of this plat as it exists today. And then preliminary plat is a requirement as well as a final plat, so we are creating two lots for the development of the hotel. One will be a parking lot on the east side there to serve the hotel property, and then a future development to the east. There is a cross-access easement that is being created as part of this plat so that these sites would work together in the future with access consolidated there on Upper Metro Place. And then, one more time here, is the final plat with those two lots being created as well as the access easement. With this site being in Bridge Street, the Planning and Zoning Commission had a lot of review at their plates there in November, so they did a conditional use for the parking lot, they did the development plan approval, the site plan approval for the construction of the hotel, as well as the recommendation to city council for these two plats, and we are recommending approval along with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I have -- I'm here for questions if you have any.
Is there any commitment towards the architecture, what we're going to get there?
The Planning and Zoning Commission approved that, yes, as part of their site plan review.
Okay.
And it meets all the code requirements in the BSD district for materials.
Okay, thank you.
Are they using the same brick as the Home 2 is that there was so much trouble with, and still you can -- it is very evident that there was a lot of trouble?
And from -- it is a similar brick product, yes. The -- what we know from the construction side of Home 2 is it was installation that caused the problems that they're having there.
Is there a solution for that, the problems?
More oversight? I'm not sure. It's really the contractor that they were using is what we've heard, they would not be used again, by the -- at least by the company that built Home 2.
I have a question. I read through the Planning and Zoning meeting minutes, and they -- there were several requests to remove the fifth-story sign on the building that was in the discussion, but I did not see that in the condition. So was that removed from the plan? Was it discussed and allowed to remain? I couldn't drill down that far.
It's actually going to have to be reviewed in the future as part of a master sign plan, but there are taller signs permitted for a building identification sign, but they would have to go back to Planning Commission, so that's why they were shown, but the commission did not act on that at that meeting.
It would be my hope that planning would not recommend approval for a fifth-story sign on this building that doesn't have any highway frontage and doesn't really have any street frontage that is in a distance. I don't know that this particular unit would-- I don't know that this particular unit would meet the criteria for needing a fifth-story sign, so I'm hopeful that that doesn't receive a positive recommendation coming forward. We certainly have worked very hard in this area to keep the signs down far more human scale, and this is going to be behind the Embassy Suites and Home Two and other things. Also saw in the ART meeting that they, about parking conflict with the Home Two with Embassy Suites, and some comments about them utilizing the Embassy Suites parking, and it's not terribly related to this application, but I would like to hear more information about that in the future, and what we're going to do to make, not put, not put an additional burden on the Embassy Suites of having to monitor their parking from their neighbor, because that isn't fair.
Anything else from council? I make a motion to approve the preliminary and final plats. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne? Ms. Amherose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Salee? Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Council committee reports. The Community Development Committee, I don't know, Claudia, are you doing this, or?
At your pleasure, however you want to.
Who's the chairman of our Community Development Committee?
I am, but-
John.
Go ahead, Claudia. I'd like to lead out.
This will be quick. So ultimately, this is our and the committee's final recommendation for the update to the tree waiver policy. And I have just a quick history here. Originally, this was approved in 2001, and we have been working on updating this since 2016. We had a couple of development applications come through that had large quantities of replacement responsibilities, and have been approached by several developers on using the tree waiver, the fee waiver policy, and really in working on those projects have kind of identified some shortcomings that we were trying to address, if authorized by council, which we were. So we had the Planning and Zoning Commission review this in May and brought our draft to council in June of this year, and then had it deferred to the Community Development Committee, who with their expertise and discussion have helped us shape the policy in a bit more of a streamlined manner, which is what is in front of you tonight for approval, and it was approved by the committee there as well. So what the code currently requires is inch-for-inch replacement for protected trees, which are the trees that are healthy and in good condition, that are over six inches in diameter, and the minimum size is two and a half inches currently. And council just approved the fee-in-lue increase of $150 an inch for the 2018 fee schedule, which will be in place then in January. And as I said, sometimes these replacement requirements can be rather sizable, and the policy has been in place for 16 years, so really an update was due here. And typically, the waiver allowed for a tree-for-tree replacement for trees that are under 24, which would not be considered landmark. And we had really wanted to do a more strong criteria for the approval of those waivers if they were to come forward. So what we've worked with staff from parks, as well as the city foresters and arborists, is to come up with a policy that includes an intent statement, which addresses that the intent still is to preserve as much as possible, and that sites shall be laid out in such a manner. We included criteria for percentage preservation and numbers, and as well as landmark trees, so the more landmark trees you preserve, the more likely you are eligible for a waiver. And then included detailed submission requirements, clarified the health of the trees based on their ratings, and prioritized based on species, size, and health for replacements, and proposing the sliding scale of prioritization, and then also allows some smaller replacements in terms of evergreens and ornamental trees for a percentage of, of required replacements. So all of that is summarized in your policy before you, and we've also included some, as suggested by the committee members, some standards for how these trees are to be treated in, as part of the installation for preservation. And replacement, I should say. So as I said, the committee recommended approval October the 30th, and we would also recommend approval tonight.
Thank you, Claudia. Any comments or questions from council? John, Chris, anybody that was involved?
I have a few. I, I don't know that in our packet, the revised policy is there, though what's in my packet still says "draft."
It becau-
10/30/17. I say that is, it starts with page two of four. There's no page one here, and it is the exact language that we used to review that night. None of the changes that we discussed are incorporated in the document that's before The changes I specifically requested were trees is not expected to live less than five years. We talked about that nomenclature. It's still in this draft version. The diameter breast height and diameter at breast height, the consistency of the language of the nomenclature is still inconsistent in what I have in my packet. I don't know if I got the wrong one, or if this is really the one you mean to be giving us for approval tonight.
So the one that has the very last statement is that all the tree replacements comply with the current edition of the American National Standards Institute?
Yes.
That's the last page I have, yeah.
But none of the changes that we talked about, if you go to the committee discussion and recommendations on the meeting minutes of October the 30th, are incorporated in, we have two, three of the four pages, so we're missing page one, and none of the comments are incorporated in the document we have. So I don't know if it was just a, an old document was attached?
I am not missing page one, so whatever I have.
Does anybody else have page?
No, we're all missing page one, and-
Two through four, it says "draft" at the top.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have-
It does say "draft" on top in my version as well, because I would not consider it to be until you approve it tonight.
Okay.
But it says revised following the CDC on 10/30.
It does say that.
It, it does, but it doesn't have any of the changes. We talked about tree, the tree is not expected to live less than five years. It's a double negative reworded to perhaps say, "tree is expected to live less than five years." All of the direction that we gave isn't included in this draft document that we have. So I don't know if you weren't going to incorporate those changes into the document for approval, or if this is just an old document, maybe the wrong one got selected out of a saved, you know, file box. Maybe we selected, you know, original versus-
Yeah, what track changes?
So what I suggest is, we might do, Claudia, as the committee chair, is maybe bring in page one, and then include the changes from the committee of Chris and Christina and myself, and see if we can incorporate those and bring those back. That'd be great.
Okay.
Here, I'll give you mine, and you can-
No, they're all the same.
But she says she has page one.
I, I do.
So hers can't be the same as ours.
I mean, we all have page, we're all starting with page two up here, right?
Yeah.
So she may have a different version.
Yeah.
She can reconcile the two.
Yeah.
I'll save mine for you, so you know what we're talking about, and then we'll just table it and deal with it at our next meeting.
Sounds fantastic. I apologize for that.
No, that's okay.
Do I have to make a motion to table this? I make a motion to table the tree replacement waiver policy till the next council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yep.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
And Ms. Amherose Grooms?
Yes.
Hotel Motel Tax Grant Recommendations Finance Committee, and Mike is not here, so Tim has agreed to fill us in.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee met last week. It was November 27th. We heard several applications, five that staff had reviewed administratively, and what you have before you are, are recommendations. There were, as you might have noticed, modifications made. Not every organization received an amount equal to what they had requested. We had a budget of $200,000, if I'm not mistaken, and I think we-
Spent it all?
We went over by $59 or something?
No, we adjusted that, too.
We adjusted that, too.
It's right at 200.
Great, all right. So, you know, that's, that's just the Finance Committee's recommendation to council. You know, certainly you're free to ask questions of myself, Christina, or Fay, and make other suggestions. Otherwise, it's my recommendation that we pass the amounts listed on the document in front of you.
Any questions from council? I would consider Tim's comment a motion then, and I'll second it.
It is.
Moving the committee's recommendation.
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Amherose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think staff comment is on my agenda, Dana, but staff comment.
Well, thank you, appreciate it. A few items in your, for information only, part of your packet. First time is the Historic Dublin Facade Improvement Program. I don't know if you got a chance to take a look at that. Not necessarily in need of direction tonight, but if, it is a program that we've been researching and looking at really for quite some time, and benchmarking it against other communities and what they've been doing. I think Donna and team did a nice job of, and Kyle pulling this information together. Kind of thought it might serve as something more along the lines of like a, similar to the bed tax process, where you might take applications under certain criteria, be evaluated, certain amount of money every year set aside, and then that funding could be used towards improvements for, for properties like that, focused primarily in the historic district. Some, some communities do this in some of their commercial districts. Worthington has a particularly robust program. I know that's where I first learned about a program like this, and has had quite a bit of success. So it's not just about facade improvement, although that's what the, the title implies, but it also could be used for parking improvements and the like around the building. So just like some feedback on that. We could do that tonight, or do that a later date, whatever you'd like to do. Information in your packet also about the library, the parking deck and street network project that's, that's coming up. Been trying to get as much information out there about this pretty significant project to everyone that we can. However, the, the library, and, and I think you all know that they're going to be doing their wall breaking, I think they call it, or something like that, it's kind of like a, for the teardown of the old library this Wednesday, I think it's at 3 o'clock. Their bids are due in this week. I know there's a lot of analysis that needs to be done with their bids. Likewise, the city's bids can be out on the street relative to the street network and the parking garage, and as we analyze these bids, we'll understand more and more the detail of some of the construction sequencing, although we dictate that, but we want to need validation of the bids to make sure that's, that's how it's going to happen. Now, the key here with these projects is that we intend to have minimal impact on North Street, with the exception of the period that it would be reconstructed, or portions of it would be reconstructed. No impact on North High Street, and trying to keep the parking lots, both Darby and the, the one out by the schools, operational as much as possible. And actually, the Darby, we're anticipating that it'll be operational all the time. I think you would only see very limited impacts even on the school, and our intent is to keep those, those parking lots open at all times, as well as access on North Street. So we, we intend to get a very robust information campaign out to the community, but also to the historic district, in particular those merchants and property owners immediately around the project. Even want to give them information in their hands, so that they can educate their patrons as they come in, and they know every phase that's going on. We'll continue to communicate through Donna as well, as she meets with the historic district, various folks down there. So we're trying every angle to keep, get this information now. We've got a little bit more analysis to do with these, once these bids come in and validation process, I think, before we get too deep in launching all specifics relative to that project. Just a reminder, the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Holiday Sunday Supper, January 14th, at the Rec Center this year. Then the last item that I would mention here under your information packet is the National Citizen Survey. We do this survey every two to three years. That information is in your packet. We intend to launch that in the January timeframe. The bulk of that survey is very consistent from year to year. It's used nationally. Just the last page of that document has some specific, and we're really looking at those as more follow-up questions to what was asked the last time, so we can continue to get a trend on, on those responses, particularly as it relates to infrastructure and things like that. So, again, can't even try, I tried, can't manipulate the questions of the National Citizen Survey in the base document, in, in order that they have consistency as they measure us against other communities as well. If you have any comments or, or questions about that, please let us know, and we'll get you any information you might need. Last, I just want to take this opportunity on behalf of city staff to pay tribute to and say thanks to both council member Leckleider and council member Salee for their tremendous service to this community all these years, for setting such a great example to us as what it means to be highly dedicated public servants to the community, and we appreciate your example, and we appreciate your support all these years that you've been on council and allowing staff to, to do all it can do for this community. So I just want to, more to say on December 18th, I don't want to spoil it all, but I just wanted to say thank you here in public for all your great work to, for this community. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dana. Committee reports, P and Z, Amy.
I have my last meeting this Thursday.
Do you? You have to be excited about that.
Last meeting, we, we swore in a very delighted Warren Fishman, so.
Ha.
He's, he's delighted to be back, and, and he will be a great addition, so looking forward to that.
Administrative Committee, Mike's not here. Tim, Amy, you got anything about Administrative Committee? I don't know that anything's been going on. Public Services, Amy?
I just have to say, that's been a great committee. I've been the chair for the past four years, and I think maybe we had one meeting in four years, so. Just saying, you guys, if you want to pick out a committee?
Okay.
You know, it, it may get, go on a hot streak in the next couple of years, but it's worked for me really well, so, thank you. I have nothing further to report.
Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
We, sorry, we met about a week or so ago, and we really focused our conversation. There were very few of us there at the time, actually. We didn't even have a quorum to pass our meeting minutes that, at that meeting. So we talked about just what we want to do in terms of planning for the coming year, and we did just a quick review on the, the events and the things that occurred during this past year. And Nancy's done a really, really excellent job, and I've been having a really great time on that committee, so that's my shameless plug to keep me on the committee for next year.
Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Tim?
Nothing.
What about Logan?
I'm, I'm sorry, we have a meeting next week. That'll be the last one of the year.
Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission?
Nothing.
And how about US 33 Innovation Corp?
Nothing.
Dublin Arts Council, John?
Yeah, I just want to thank you all for coming out and supporting the wine and beer tasting. It was a lot of fun. It was a great night, and I think, I think it was sold out, really. I don't think we could have taken any more people. So again, thanks for your support of the arts.
Thanks, John. Board of Education, Chris, Christina?
We have our next meeting on December the 13th. I, I will forward an email to you all. I will not be able to attend that meeting. There's a very exciting wrestling meet going to happen at Hilliard Weaver Middle School, so that will require my attendance, but I think that'll be our last one of the year, and I, we cleaned up a lot of things in our last meeting, so. Are you wrestling? Sorry, can I help myself? No comment.
Christina, you're up.
Oh, my. Sorry, got all wrapped up in wrestling. Thank you to Tom, who left, I don't blame him, for the beautiful decorations in the garden club at the-
Wait, hang time out here. I skipped, we skipped ahead and around, we were talking about-
Scratch that.
Board of Education. Did you have anything to add about Board of Education? Deal, and we're almost back to you, just a quick. Well, I was just, I was just giving Logan you to chime in if you had anything you had to say. Washington Township, Mr. Richter, chief, anything you got to add?
Mayor, please sit down with the council. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the community event this Wednesday.
Come on up, Eric, come on up.
This Wednesday, December 6th, at Washington Township Hall, from 4, or from 6 to 8 p.m., we are going to be having Santa and Mrs. Claus celebrating the season with us. There's information on our Facebook page for Washington Township and our website, but probably most important with this event is it serving as the kickoff for the Firefighters for Kids charitable toy drive, so we are accepting new unwrapped toys and gift cards. Correct me if I'm wrong. I do have the chief here with me. Chief, is there anything? You've been involved with this for a number of years.
No, that's, I think you said it very clearly. It's been a huge success for us. We appreciate-
It's been a huge success for us. We appreciate the input from the community and support from the local community.
Okay. And you say in a package but not wrapped in wrapping paper? You need to be able to see it, but new. That is correct. New and unwrapped. And like I said, we'll take gift cards too. And that is six to eight on the sixth of December. On the sixth, this Wednesday. Fantastic. That's all we have for you. Great, thanks, Eric. Thanks for coming in. Council Roundtable, Chris?
I had the opportunity to attend the National League of Cities two, two weeks ago and it was a really, a really good time. There, there were some things that, that were very affirming, that we do very right and, and there were a few things that were challenging, that, that perhaps we might consider adopting some of the things. I plan to after the first of the year come back with some topics that we could maybe discuss, maybe they'd be assigned to committees or boards and commissions, things of that nature. But I appreciate the opportunity to have attended that and it, it was time well spent, I think. Want to thank Dana and all the staff for putting together the great employee breakfast. That was a very nice event and extremely well done. Appreciated the tree lighting on the thirtieth as well. I think there's a couple of little things we can do there that will make it an even better celebration, but I think for the first time in that location, it was, it was very well done. And appreciate Tom and, and all the Dublin Women's Philanthropic Club and the Muirfield Garden Club and all that they did at opening the Kaufman House on Saturday. It was, it was really very well done and it was, you know, they told the stories about how they took off pieces of the wallpaper and had it replicated by a company, I think, out of Atlanta that made wallpaper so that they could really make it true to the period and make it true to its original condition. And I've, I've never seen the house in better shape than it is right now. Those folks are really working hard. John Saul, you donated all the roping and things for that and it was, just couldn't have been any more lovely, so appreciate their hard work on that. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Christina?
Thanks, sorry I jumped in.
It's okay. I'm sorry, it's nothing.
I just got excited. Yeah, no. So yes, the, the holiday, opening of the holiday season festivities were great. Actually, one of the cool things that they had in the barn was the sleigh, which was like an actual sleigh you would do a one-horse open sleigh ride on. And you donated the tree. It was awesome. It was really cool. Anyway, but that, that's all I have to say about that. So Tim and Amy, thank you very much for everything that you've done, I think, throughout many, many years on city council. But for me personally, when I was first elected, the both of you were more than willing to meet with me and talk with me and kind of give me pointers whether I wanted to maybe hear them or not. And I think that I take those with me all the time as I do from my other fellow council members that have helped me along the way. The first two years, as I'm sure you remember, are a big learning curve and are challenging. And so having knowledge there to learn from and to lean on has been really critically important to me and so I wanted to say thank you for that. I appreciate that. I know that I will see you out in the community frequently. I certainly hope to and I hope you'll always allow me to tap you when I have questions and certainly allow me to be there for you as well. I know I don't have as lengthy of a history as certainly John does with you, but that doesn't diminish my appreciation for the gifts that you've given me over these last two years. Whether we agree or disagree, your passion for the city is very clear to me. I hope it is clear to everyone else and we're very lucky to have had your service. So thank you, both.
Thanks, Christina. Amy?
Gosh, I was trying to think of something pithy to say tonight because it's my last meeting and oh my gosh. Really, I, I had all the eloquence I could possibly muster when I announced that I wasn't going to be running. That was really heartfelt and well-prepared and I'm just not there today. I had a big incident on my way out of work today, so that's why I was late to the executive session and I'm just woefully unprepared. So I guess since we're going to be having this reception in a couple of weeks, I'll have to say something then. But I do want to say to the staff, thank you so much for your work. It's really, really amazing to me, the amount of work that you do. And I think probably about two or three years into my first term on council, I realized that every time one of us speaks up here and we say an idea, it generates just hours and hours of work for the staff and we need to be cognizant of that. Because I, I think I was in Nashville with Sarah Ott and she was kind of describing, putting together this little trip that I said, oh, wouldn't it be great if we could go down, you know, go someplace and see some things? Oh my heavens. So I, I gained that appreciation and, and just working with the different folks on staff, the different departments. Your level of professionalism and dedication to this community is, is amazing. Some of you live here and some of you don't, but it's, it's that, that passion for service and, you know, Dana's all in, all the time. I think has, has put words on what I felt has been the attitude of our staff forever. And when I started all those years ago, there were so many things I didn't know and so many things I had never had any experience with. And I think back, my first big project I was involved with, I was on the planning committee for the South Pool. And, you know, every summer I get to visit there and it's like, wow, this is so cool. And that was kind of the first thing I did. And then I realized probably time for me to get off council because that South Pool's been there forever. So that being said, it's, it's been wonderful. I've enjoyed almost every single part of the job and to the new council members. Jane, I've got lots and lots of paper if you're interested, probably not though, but just, it's, it's just, it's been wonderful. It's been a great privilege and I'll miss it very much, but I'm very much looking forward to experiencing my community in a way that I haven't for most of the time I've lived here and that's just as a regular citizen. And I'm going to have time now to go do things like work out at the rec center in the evenings and maybe go to yoga or, you know, do something that I've not been able to do. So I'm very much looking forward to that and certainly the thing I'm most looking forward to though is standing on the pedestrian bridge when we dedicate that. I'm inviting myself, I'm coming to that. That's going to be, that's going to be amazing and I think probably the, the thing that I will, you know, if there, if there is a piece of, of something that I will be most proud of, it will be that. So thank you all so much.
Thanks, Amy. Tim?
Thank you. You've got cookies, some of you, that were fortunate enough to receive them. The rest of you, I'm sorry, I'm, I think there are extras that maybe you can sample after the meeting or tomorrow, but in what's become an annual tradition the last several years, please enjoy them courtesy of Mrs. Lecliter. I had nothing to do with it. So in, in closing, it's been a good run. I suppose it's fitting that I began my service on city council as something of a neighborhood activist, not unlike Amy, and I'm ending my service on a similar note. Not long after serving as one of the founding trustees of the Wyndham Village Homeowners Association in the mid nineteen nineties, an application was submitted to rezone the southeast corner of Avi Murfield Drive and Post Road to allow for a Super America gas station and a Valvoline oil change complex. And not surprisingly, this was opposed by nearby neighborhoods, including mine. When the then city council denied the rezoning, a group of residents in distant established neighborhoods insulated from development pressures, except maybe a Jack Nicklaus museum, filed an initiative petition seeking a community-wide vote to overturn the denial of the rezoning. It turned out to be my first campaign and I served as one of the leaders in successfully defeating Super America's efforts in protecting the integrity of the nearby neighborhoods. Soon thereafter came the effort to build a Columbus Crew Stadium on property the city had purchased near one sixty-one and Hooshard Road. In my first year as a planning and zoning commissioner and with Lamar Hunt directly seated approximately ten feet in front of me, about right there where Michelle's sitting, clearly in an effort to intimidate me, I was the lone no vote against rezoning the property for a stadium. When the then city council nevertheless approved the rezoning, Dublin residents pursued a referendum vote and I was active in the successful defeat of that rezoning, where today thankfully sits an Amazon Web Services facility instead of a soon-to-be-empty Crew Stadium, which I say with regret insofar as the Crew's concerned because I don't think any of us want to see them leave Columbus or Central Ohio. Fast forward fifteen to twenty years to my more recent efforts to protect the integrity of Dublin neighborhoods and discourage irresponsible development along Highland Croy. Why did I do these things? Well, it's simple. It was the right thing to do. It was in the best interest of the residents and best for Dublin long-term. So make no mistake, my so-called political career likely would have ended with my lonely no vote on the Crew Stadium rezoning. I had been appointed to an unexpired term on the planning and zoning commission and most likely would not have been reappointed by a city council that was courting the Crew if not for the citizen referendum that ultimately succeeded. I mention this to encourage my colleagues and future city councils to exhibit political courage, certainly not to ignore the will of the people, but when council chambers is filled with angry residents imploring you to vote no on an issue, be guided what is in the long-term best interest of the community and not your personal political fortunes. To the entire city staff, I want to thank you for your support all of these years. I've appreciated your wise advice, your professionalism and your extreme dedication. You've become like a second family to me and I will forever cherish the memory of working with you and all that we have accomplished together. It's been a tremendous privilege to serve in this position and I can't help thinking how lucky I've been to have had this experience. So thank you all, have a great holiday and best of luck in two thousand eighteen.
Thank you, Tim. John?
Well, this is addressed to both of you and I want to thank you first for your deliberations and your short and concise arguments over the past, is it sixteen years for each of you? Thirty, thirty-two years. Amazing. And I guess the professional aspects of how you conducted yourselves makes me think and hold you in high esteem. You've got a, you've both called the staff and researched the issues rather than hold up the meetings and, you know, the staff works all day and has to come down to these meetings at night. And both of you, instead of asking questions here to tie up the night, you did your homework. You called the staff, you worked all the details out, so you kept your comments brief and that's really much appreciated and that's really a compliment to your professionalism. And then I think the other thing I want to do is thank you for your courage because, you know, when you think Dana came in here asking for a million dollars one time for a fiber optic thing, when a million dollars was a lot of money for us and it turned out to be a great thing. And then years went by and you guys had the courage.
Oh, I thought you were going to tell the story when you threw me out.
You guys had the courage really to go ahead and build, you know, a phenomenal city, a dynamic city. And, you know, it's easy in government, and you see a lot of this in government, for people just to go along with the status quo because that's a safe bet. And Dublin, to its credit, has always been the adventurous city. And I think, you know, we're lucky, we're better off than Urban Myers. I think we've been ninety-six percent successful and all the risks we've taken. And that took a lot of logic and courage from the staff and from you guys who have been here a long time. So I'd have to say you brought the city to new heights and you will, there's forty-five thousand people that are indebted to you and they'll never know all the good things you've done. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Yeah, when you, I'm sitting here looking at this little timeline I drew, two thousand and one to two thousand and seventeen is extraordinary run. And, and those of us up here and staff know that being in this position, in this community, is an everyday effort. Every day, you get calls, you get emails, you have issues. It is every day. And to do that day in and day out for sixteen years is truly extraordinary and to have two of you that have been doing it is, is, is really remarkable and this community is very indebted to you. So fortunately for you, you can drive around and every single day you can see the success of your dedication and hard work that you have put into this community for the last sixteen years and even prior to that. So like Dana mentioned, I'll reserve any further comments until the eighteenth because I'm, I'm looking forward to that evening, but, you know, it, it is truly, truly appreciated by this community, by me, by your fellow council members and everybody that you have served because it is a, it is an overwhelming dedication and you should be very proud of what you've been able to accomplish for all these years. So thank you very much for your service. And with that, we will consider twenty seventeen a wrap. I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and we will see you back in January.